Five thirty, we'll get the meeting started. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Eastman.
Here.
Mayor Giles. Commissioner Yucovitch.
Here.
Commissioner Everett.
Okay. After you'd like to join us to have opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you would give the commission wisdom that they will make the right decisions for the people of our Kansas City. We also pray for our first responders, that you will protect them, guide them, from their duties of protecting the people. We also pray for our city workers, that you will look after them and protect them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or delusions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Okay, do I have approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Yucovitch and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Recognition of visitors? Chief?
Commissioners, appreciate you having the time for me to come here today and talk to you and introduce you to some of our newly promoted officers. On March fifth of two thousand sixteen, Officers Troy, excuse me, Troy Cochran, Jason Sanderholm, and Jeremy Sampson were promoted to the position of Master Police Officer. MPO Cochran has been with the police department for six years and he holds a master's degree in criminal justice. MPO Sanderholm has been with the police department for five years and he holds a bachelor's degree in liberal arts and sciences. And then, MPO Sampson has been with the police department for five years and he holds an associate's degree in criminal justice. These three candidates performed over the last several months, several feats of great strength by taking examination, determined what their base knowledge was. They went through interview board that consisted of supervisors and citizens that we serve. And then, of course, we reviewed their work history over their entire lifetime with the police department and then an interview with me. This took several months and they put a lot of effort into it and we'd like to congratulate them and recognize them for their success.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no awards proclamations and move on to the consent agenda. The approval of March first, two thousand sixteen recessed to March eighth, two thousand sixteen. Regular meeting minutes is written.
I'll make a motion we could approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and seconded by myself to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? There is no old business, now new business. Mayor's board appointments.
We have several vacancies and traditionally in April is when we do a lot of the turnover for some existing boards. One board that is going to have either some reappointments or vacancies is the hospital board. I believe they have two reappointments, which would be Mark Patton and Greg Norwood, and then the third, Arlie Rice, is actually term limit. So she'll no longer be on the board as of April. So we do have some openings coming up. Still have a few names on list. I believe we have Mel Kuhn is interested, Mike Bergenini, and Hat McLeod is also interested. So get the word out and...
I've also got about, I had, you know, Chad had challenged me and I had asked the public and I probably got, oh, nine or ten other people that are interested in the hospital board.
Do they have that form?
No, that's what I need to get from you so I can redistribute that.
Okay, we'll email that form to you so you can get it to them.
Can city employees be on that board?
No. No.
Okay, so I'll...
Why is that? I'm curious.
Being a public board, that'd be potential conflict of interest.
Well, and if it's part of their duties, we would need to pay them for it. We couldn't ask them to volunteer if we're requiring it as part of their job duties.
Like the hospital?
Say a police officer wanted to be on that board, on the hospital board.
Well, they have to get approval from me first before they could be even made eligible for it.
That's, I'm coming more from an HR standpoint that if it's a city employee and we're appointing them to something that's owned by the city, more than likely we'd have to pay them overtime under the Fair Labor Standards Act. In addition, city code specifically lists the city employee that shall be an ex-official member of that board and that's the city manager.
I just wanted, yeah. Alright.
Okay, do we have to make any today or can we wait till next week to do it or?
Yeah, we wait.
Okay.
Well, we need to see your list. I mean...
Yeah, I need to get, I have names, but I don't have, you know, any of the other criteria that that list asks for.
Yeah, it's just contact information, phone numbers, pretty simple, why they're interested.
Well, they're not due until April, so we've got the month of April to...
That's April one.
April first for...
April first. They're coming up.
Two of them.
Their next meeting isn't until the end of April, so we have a little bit of time in April to make that appointment. We have two meetings prior to their next meeting.
So we'll have time to look those names over?
Correct. Yeah, you'll have two meetings in April to really make the appointment.
Okay. We'll, uh... Do we, do I have a motion to postpone it till a later time?
I'd move to table the mayor board appointments to the March twenty-second meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Everett and seconded by Commissioner Yucovitch to postpone the board appointments till March twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Okay, new business.
I didn't hear you. Excuse me?
I did. I just kind of want it in April instead of March twenty-second, but I thought that might be a little fast.
We can always postpone it again, can't we?
Yeah, we, yeah, we could.
Phil Kuffin said that, Jake.
You know, it happens so fast, I just, you know.
Oh, that's okay, well.
Yeah, we can postpone.
We'll see what Chad has to say too, because when he's back.
Okay. New business number two.
Consider a charter ordinance of the city of Arkansas City exempting such city from the provisions of KSA forty dash seventeen oh seven relating to the permissible use of funds by the Firefighters Relief Association and providing substitute and additional provisions relating thereto.
Commissioners, I'll give you a brief overview and I just want you to know this is for first reading only, it's not for action tonight. The Firefighters Relief Association provides insurance to its members and specifically I'm referring to life insurance tonight. Statute that applies to the firefighters relief associations provide all sorts of different sections for if there's a volunteer fire department. If it's volunteer and paid, if it's all paid, if it's cities of the second class, if it's the city of El Dorado, the statute is all over the place as to what these firefighters relief associations can do. Because it's not uniformly applicable to every city, we can modify it via charter ordinance to provide a different method for the provision of some sort of life insurance benefits to our firefighters. The reason we brought this up tonight is by current statute, when we're a city of the second class and an all-paid fire department, we can provide life insurance through the firefighters relief association. The association actually pays for the insurance and provides it to its own members. We had an incident where we had an employee at the fire department that we couldn't insure. And, and it, it just brought to light the fact that the statute as it applied to us and our situation didn't have an equitable result because there was another firefighter out there putting his life on the line, but, but he, we couldn't insure him. We couldn't provide him life insurance even though the association can provide it to everybody else. So the association started looking at the statute to see what, what it could do, what other cities can do, and they determined that other cities can provide annuities to their members. Specifically, volunteer fire departments can provide annuities to everybody. So we started looking at, well, if a firefighter is not eligible for insurance coverage, if we couldn't get insurance coverage, then perhaps we could obtain an annuity for that firefighter. And that, that's how it's written. It says that if they're not eligible for insurance, then the association could purchase an annuity as long as it had cash on hand to do it. I've discussed the proposed charter ordinance with Paul Hunter, who is here in the audience today, and we would like to consider perhaps revising it even more to determine if we could provide annuities to everybody in lieu of life insurance if the firefighter so chooses or if the association chooses. Perhaps they could get an annuity cheaper than life insurance and provide essentially the same benefit at a lower cost. So there's, there's some things that we're still looking at. So this is on just for first reading, just to let you know this is on the table and we will revise it further and discuss it further and bring it back, probably not at the next meeting because it's in a week, but, but the first meeting in April. And I welcome any questions you have and I'm sure Mr. Hunter would be happy to answer any questions.
You might have answered my question. I had one on if it was only going to be allowed for a non-paid volun, I mean, a volunteer.
We, we don't have any.
Oh, we don't?
Nope, we're all paid.
Oh, I understood that we might have one, okay. But if we do, they don't, they can get an annuity, but we can also offer the annuity to regular fire department members.
Not as the statute is currently written, but that's what we want to do. There are some fire departments that can provide annuities, but currently an all-paid fire department in cities of the second class cannot provide annuities. At least it's not specifically authorized by statute. There is some authority that, that says we could go ahead and do it, but I feel more comfortable if there's specific authority that authorizes the firefighters association to do this. I feel much more comfortable doing that rather than taking someone else's interpretation that says although it's not specific authority there, it's not prohibited, so you can. I'm not comfortable saying that. I'd rather give them the specific authority to do it.
So, so the idea is just, is to make sure that each firefighter is basically the same amount of pay as being given to each person in one way or another?
The same benefit, certainly.
Chief Wolf?
The state statute basically...
Or either one of you?
The state statute basically states that all firefighters across the board have to be treated fairly and equitable. And so basically, there are some gaps, as Tamara was saying, on exactly what we can do from the state level and the state statutes. And so we were just kind of hoping on a more local level if we could get an ordinance that basically states that across the board that we can do that. And then the uninsurable firefighters, we've ran into that actually twice already and we, we weren't really following the state statute specifically to treat everybody fairly and equally. So that's kind of why we're here. The state legislation, they, they're not going to open up that legislation to change those state statutes. But of course, on a local level, you know, we can, if there's something not in the actual statutes, then we can write our own to cover those types of things.
What would, what would happen if somebody wanted to volunteer to help?
We, we do have volunteers. We're actually, we currently, I think, have seven volunteers.
That actually fight fires for us? Well...
Mike, like Mike Evenger, for example.
Sorry, I'm wrong.
That's what I thought.
Okay, well, I, I thought when we first looked into it a year ago.
Well, basically, when, when you were looking at it, that as the state statutes are written, it's kind of, and our interpretation is that it specifically states for volunteer fire departments, you could do annuities. And really, paid departments can do pensions, but us being a combination department, there, there really isn't any statutes that specifically state combination departments. And then we're also classified as a city of the second class, which is at the state level, they determine all that, that stuff. And, and so because we're a combination department and a city of a second class, there is no specific state statute that allows us to do these types of things. So there's nothing that says that we can't, but we just need on a local level to say that we can.
So this, so, um, so if we table this for, this is the first reading, the second reading would be?
Into the first meeting in April.
First meeting in April.
So basically the volunteer firemen will get any kind of annuity or nothing then?
Well, under current statute, if, if there's a volunteer firefighter and they've served at least twenty years and attended and fought at least seventy-five percent of fires, then they are eligible for an annuity.
Do we have anybody fall in that category or not?
Not currently, yeah. But the annuity would have to be established in order for anybody. And actually, we don't have any volunteer firefighters that fall under that, but we have firefighters that do fall under the, I think they're close to the twenty-year mark.
I guess let me ask this question. Why, why, why do we have some firemen that don't meet the requirements for life insurance? Due to, due to health reasons and AIDS and those sort of elements?
Yeah, without violating any HIPAA laws, it's generally, it, one has been a health reason and then another one has been a lawful reason, so.
So do we have to provide life insurance policies to, to any of the firemen? Is that a requirement? A state requirement?
This is, well, this is a, a separate deal. This is a relief association and it's basically provided by the state. The, when, when everybody in the state of Kansas pays their homeowner's insurance, a percentage of that goes directly into the relief association fund. And those funds are distributed throughout the state of Kansas to all the different departments that are eligible. There's a few that aren't right now, but if they're current with everything with the state, then they get these funds. And those funds are, have to be used in a certain manner according to state statutes. They can buy life insurance, health and accident insurance, annuities. They can be put into a pension fund for, like the state, the city of El Dorado does specifically a pension fund with their funds. They don't do any life insurance or anything like that.
But as, as a city, we're not responsible to buy life insurance, is that correct?
No, there is some life insurance, I believe they're capers already, that all city employees are covered in. That's very basic. It's...
Yeah, this is a separate...
This is a supplemental policy?
Yeah, that's KPNF. Yeah.
Yeah, but when, when we become employed, we can sign up for all that insurance. And then also the state of Kansas themselves, the KS, KSFAA or FFA, provides life insurance for every firefighter. And so if they're injured or killed in the line of duty, then, then the Kansas...
Firefighters Association, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, State Firefighters Association carries their own insurance stuff on each firefighter too, so.
So heaven forbid, for example, if somebody was to perish in a fire or in the act of fighting a fire as a city employee or a city volunteer from a liability of the city, our city's insurance is going to have to have a settlement with the, with that, with that person's family of some degree. Isn't that not accurate?
I would say it depends on a lot of different factors. If the city had liability, it, it could depend on a myriad of legal factors to determine whether the city had any liability. Unless the city did something negligent or something wrong, then the city would not personally be liable now.
For a volunteer?
We dealt with this in the past, line of duty death. There is several provisions that, that assist the family of firefighters. Number one, like Paul said, the Kansas State Association, they have a death benefit that's strictly on duty and that. And then in addition, you have, what the relief association also provides, the local association. I believe there's a workman comp portion too.
Right.
And that, and then there's also a federal amount that comes down for line of duty death. So there's several avenues that they hit to, to assist the, the family members.
So would, would a volunteer firefighter fall in that when they're working?
Yes.
Yeah, they're covered by work comp.
Okay, I, being a volunteer sometimes you don't get any...
In all those categories?
So as long as we can keep them covered by the individual, our own local association, so.
So would this money go into the local association?
Actually, they, they call it two percent money and that's that, that money on the fire and lightning insurance goes to the state and then it's divided up amongst the local organizations.
Okay, the money's already there.
The money's there, yeah.
It's just trying to find a way to help to give this person a benefit that they can get.
Chief, how much money are we talking about? I mean, it'll come back to us, one or two percent.
Paul's secretary, he can tell you how much we collect.
Every year, the association is getting a check from the state for around thirty-eight thousand. And we are currently being redetermined by the state. And I think with, it's all based on population and valuation of, of property. And I believe our numbers are going to be elevated to about forty to forty-one thousand by next year.
And that goes into what, when you get that, what does that go into? I mean...
Basically, currently, we are buying life insurance policies. We also have a long-term disability policies on all the firefighters. And then, as I was talking about, the, the fair and equitable deal, I just found out that over the course of, I don't know how many years, at least twenty, that we weren't treating our volunteer firefighters fairly because we were buying different insurance for them than we were for the paid guys. And so I'm in the, the process, basically, and that's why we're here, is we're, we're changing it to where everybody gets the same because we, as according to the state, just because they're volunteers, just because they're paid, we can't treat anybody differently. They have to be fair. And so I'm already in the process of getting all of them switched over to the same insurance as everybody, so. So that's kind of what it is.
That makes sense.
I move we table this ordinance and put it on the agenda for the first meeting in April for a second reading.
I'll second that.
One, one other question, I guess I'd like you to, so the organization that, that chairs all the money, you know, collects the money and then redistributes it, I kind of feel like this should be their fight, not Arc City's fight. Because then it, then it benefits the communities of, all the communities across Kansas, not just Arc City. Whereas if we just circumvent the system, maybe for what we think's the best interest, I, I mean, I don't know. I'm just talking out loud here. It sounds like what you're talking about is a very valid point.
Yep, and I completely agree with you. The, the reason why we're here on a local level is there are only two states left that have the relief association, Kansas and Pennsylvania. And this has been, the relief association for across the United States has been around since the late eighteen hundreds. And every state that has opened up their legislation and tried to change statutes ended up basically losing their relief association. So the state of Kansas and all the firefighters are actually of trying to avoid opening up any of those statutes because we don't want to see it go away. We don't want to see things get manipulated too greatly at the state level. And that's why they are okay with us doing it on a local. And so, yeah, there probably are going to be other cities out there that have probably done similar stuff. And actually, I'm in communication with a gentleman from Wald Allen Reed, who works with other relief associations. And that's kind of what they have to do. They have to go through this process and that's why they just don't want to open up the state statute, so.
So it's best if we help you guys out so you can do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Tamara, is this a first reading or is it a first tabled?
It wasn't actually on the agenda as a first read. It just said new business. So I just requested that it be a first read. So they, they can certainly table it or they could just call it a first read.
But if they table it, then it's not a first read, right?
It's still a first read. In, in our prior, prior practice, we've considered when something's a first read, they don't have to take action, but it's always been specifically designated as a first read on the agenda. And that's why this one's a little bit different.
Any other questions? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Yucovitch and seconded by Commissioner Warren to table section five, item number two until the April meeting. All in favor, say aye.
The first meeting, the first meeting in April.
First meeting in April, okay. Is that what I said?
You just said meeting in April, I thought.
I didn't know what you said. I said first meeting in April.
Okay, alright. First meeting in April. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. New business number four.
Consider resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to file an application for a historic preservation fund grant for a survey of the downtown Arkansas City Commercial District, pledging matching funds and/or in-kind services for said grant.
Mayor and Commissioner, the, the city is eligible for grant funds due to our status as a certified local government. We're actually eligible without that designation, but having that designation helps us. This grant program is authorized by the National Park Service. And what the money, what the funds can be used for is resur surveying your historic district, developing historic plans, different design guidelines, that sort of thing, as well as helping to list certain properties on the register. The Historic Preservation Board has been interested in doing a resurvey of the downtown historic area for some time now. The last time the district was surveyed was back in nineteen eighty-three. So a lot of the information that's in the survey is outdated. There's been some, there's been several demolitions in that period. There's also been some buildings that maybe were excluded that could now be encoded in a future district if it's surveyed and we find all information on it. Certainly, in the last thirty years, buildings have become newly eligible for the register. One of the basic requirements for being on a register is to be at least fifty years old. So in nineteen eighty-three, there are some buildings in the downtown area that, that didn't quite meet that or maybe were sixty, but didn't quite meet the threshold, but now they might. Like I said, the Historic Preservation Board has wanted to do this for some time. The key thing about this particular project is that this is just a survey. This, this particular project would not actually change the district in any way, wouldn't, wouldn't add any new regulations, wouldn't change, wouldn't take away any regulations, and it also would not list anything on the register. That would be a separate project that would happen at a later date. This is just to get some more information on the buildings that are currently in the district, which will help when we do reviews, we have a little more information, maybe some, some more photos and stuff like that. It's kind of what we're looking for. So what this, what we're proposing to do, what the board is wanting us to do anyways, is to go get a grant for this. I've looked in to see what various consultants might charge for this and we came up with a budget for what that might be for our district. The consultant has to be selected by competitive bidding process according to the requirements of the grant and follow through our competitive bidding process too, for that matter. So they would have to go through that. The information would then be used to propose any changes, like I said, to any of the districts. The grant does require a forty percent match. However, that can be covered by staff salaries and actually the, the board or any other volunteers that we bring on can actually count as match. So at the end of the day, what it comes out to is... So, at the end of the day, what it comes out to is, we should not be at any actual cash, we shouldn't have to write a check at the end of this program. Um, I guess another thing I wanted to add was this, the funds for this project, a lot of people wanna know where funds like this come from. This comes from receipts from the Outer Continental Shelf, so like the oil rigs that are offshore in the Gulf or whatever, those, they pay fees in order to do that, the permit fees. And this, that's where the funds come from, for this grant program. So it's not, we're not getting taxed at the federal level for this sort of program. Um, there's one other thing I need to tell, tell you about, the original packet that I sent out. Uh, we've made some modifications to the budget portion. Um, the original one used my salary, cause I'm gonna be the grant administrator if we do this. Uh, I just had the base salary, but I found out that we can use the benefits added salary, so we recalculated that, kinda reduced what, the non-hours that we would have to put into it. And then also, uh, moved the accounting just into the indirect category. The indirect category allows us to, I have to track every, every penny. So anything that falls under that, and so, it's kinda difficult to track how much is used for accounting measures, so. Um, that being said, the, the final application is due the end of this week, it's ready to go. Um, what we're asking you tonight for as a commission is, uh, just your support, like a resolution of support.
So it's just basically staff and, uh, volunteers?
Working alongside the consultants.
And that's not gonna cost us anything?
It should not, um, if, if we do all our, duck, put all ducks in a row, and we do everything properly, then it should not cost anything. And I've been told by the, by the ship-o that, um, the state Historic Preservation Office, that if we're a little short, because of our status as a CLG, they may be able to cover, um, a shortage. That's gonna depend on how much it is, but we should not be out of any of that.
How difficult would it be to eliminate our historical district?
You can do it, um.
Could we apply, apply the grant for that?
No. It would probably not fund a, a thing like that. Um, cause the idea is to, uh, preserve the historic characteristic of your community.
So far, I've only seen it be problematic and costly. And then you have to make a nineteen twenties building stay nineteen twenties, and an eighteen ninety building stay looking eighteen ninety, and the downtown still has no continuity. And if Stage wanted to remodel, it'd have to look nineteen sixties or whatever, you have to stay with what you were, and that doesn't, it still looks hodgepodge, and I'd say, looks horrible, and you have to cost more.
That's, that's kinda how it's developed over time, that's kinda the character of our downtown, is this, this mixed development, that's, that's how it's been built over the years.
Yeah, I, I kinda echo that from, I just remember, and I, I remember one of the first commission meetings I came to, I thought you were a store owner. Honestly, I, I didn't know what, what you were going over, I think it was either Taylor Drug, or somebody that had, had window issues, and, you know, the Arc City glass had to come down here and make up a window that looks fitting, but it's not fitting, that cost them twice as much, or three times as much, and.
Antique mall, some antique mall had to do something, some antique mall.
And anyhow, that was my first experience with that, it just seems a little overbearing for, and I, maybe it does add value, I, I just don't see it, I guess.
Well, it's important to maintain what you have. I mean, you certainly don't wanna, for instance, if you don't maintain the building, you don't, we don't wanna lose what we do have, we don't want the historic buildings to be torn down. Um, the thing about being on the register, and I know there's some negatives to it, I understand that completely. There's also the capability to get tax credits and, and grants for those property owners too, to help them through that process, to, to cover those excess costs.
Is that the main advantage of it?
That being on the, the register, well, from the property owner's perspective, yes.
How much of that have we capitalized on?
We've had several projects, the, the Burford, for example, a lot, they've received a number of tax credits and grants for their project. Um, Union State Bank has recently used, uh, state tax credits, the Osage Hotel has used them. I think there's been a few others, but those are the most recent projects that are being used.
Is it normally the delta of what it would cost to do it, um, in current fashion versus historical fashion?
I can't speak to each and every other project, but.
That's kinda what I recall.
I think that's kinda what's the idea, it's not to fund the entire project.
Correct.
It's just kinda make up for the fact, hey, you gotta do these extra things, and it's gonna cost a little bit more money, so, here's a tax credit or a grant to help you out.
What, what does, um, the Preservation Society have to where, say Dan, I'm gonna pick on Dan for a minute. His building, uh, they have to, say they have to redo it. How, how can he get a substantial amount of money to do that, and still not cost him an, I'd say, an arm and a leg to do it?
That, that's when these tax credits and grants would come into play. Um, the only thing is, when you, when you're doing it to those standards, it's gotta be to the T, it's gotta meet the satisfaction of the historic society.
The local historic or the national historic?
State level, is who you're determining that. If it's a, if it's a local project that's not using funds, then, then we can determine that at the local level, here with our board.
How, how tough are those standards?
They're, they're fairly stringent, um, but like I said, for the local projects that don't have all those funds, they're just guidelines. Um, any project that happens downtown, and this is like the, this, the some antique mall that you're referring to, and Taylor Drug, they can appeal that to this board. Um, and you guys can overrule those decisions. But if it's, if it involves funding like that, that's, that's not gonna be an option for them, cause they would, you know, pull the funding.
Well, windows is a good example, very good example, cause, you know, you can't buy an old window for a house to put in the ones you had unless you wanna spend big queues of money, so.
And the old ones aren't as good either.
Huh?
And the old ones aren't as good as a modern day window.
So, that, that's why I was asking, is there any way to, for something like that, that's not made anymore?
There's certainly ways to get around that, the.
Okay.
Like materials, um, that's the idea, is that you try to make it, at least, if you can't, if you can't, just fix it.
If you can't?
Then you can use like materials, something that looks like it's similar to the old one.
Mr. Manager, what, what's your take on this, how it's worked in your few years of tenure here?
Depends on the community and how they embrace it, several communities really truly embrace their historic backgrounds and roots of their downtown. Um, give you some example, samples, Wamigo, Council Grove, um, Salina, uh, they really embrace the historical designation of their district and their downtown district. You know, there's gonna be hiccups from time to time, but generally, they're able to overcome it. By being a CLG, it gives a lot more flexibility in the hands of the local decision-makers rather than be at the state level, so there's a lot more give and take that's allowed by having us be a CLG. Um, but it really just comes down to what the community wants to do, and how they view their downtown. If you view it as being historically important, it's a good process to have and good designation. If you don't, then, you don't, I mean, it's just how you wanna view it, it just comes down to personal preference, really.
Was Winfield good?
Yes, yeah, if they're Main Street Kansas, they were actually took the next step even further than what we did, and designated by being a Main Street Kansas, which had to be a historical district, I believe, plus, they had, um, well, when the program was up and running, there was even further. Um, well, I take that back, you could either be a historical district, or you could be in Main Street Kansas, and I think they were Main Street Kansas. And, um, it's basically a historical district, it per se, um, but.
Managed a little different.
Do I know?
Managed a little different.
It's managed, cause you actually had your own management group that was handling, you had your own local board, um, for the Main Street, um, businesses. But that's, went away three, four years ago now, I think, they got rid of Main Street program, so. Um, but they still have their Main Street Society or Main Street, uh, up and running in Winfield, and I think it's Chamber of Commerce handles that, I believe, or is it separate?
I'm, honestly, I'm not that familiar with their, with how they handle it.
I know those tax credits for the Burford were, were huge for that project, it wouldn't have got done, so I mean, it's, there's some benefit to it.
But that, but the, the Burford, Jay, I mean, in all fairness, is a, although they have some private funding, but it's all, it's all either donated or, or tax-based, it's not a Graves Drug, or a Griner Man, for example.
Well, that's, that's true.
You know, I mean, it's a little bit different scope than, you know, it, it's one thing when you're playing with somebody else's money versus, versus your own. Does that make a difference, like Burford is compared to a business like Graves, or Schmidt Jewelers?
They, actually, by being a nonprofit, there is one tax credit they can't use, they can't use the federal, uh, income tax credit, whereas a for-profit, uh, business can. So they're actually, are eliminated from that particular program. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but.
Well, they don't, do they make any difference, I mean, the people that give the money?
No, it shouldn't, it's based on the individual project.
The project, okay. Any other questions? Uh, well, since you say it's not gonna cost us any money, uh, and will it be, will it be a benefit?
I think this, by doing this survey, it just gives us a little bit more information about each building. If nothing else, um, it helps the individual property owner understand why it's on the register in the first place.
Okay, and I've read in here that the property owner has to approve of the survey being taken?
They don't have to approve the survey, but they have to approve of, is, if they're not already on the register, they have to approve of being listed on the register. At, at the time, this was done in nineteen eighty-three, they would've had to have gone through a process where, and of course, that was before I was here, a long time before I was here. But, the way it works now is fifty-one percent of the property owners within the designated district would have to approve about listing.
Okay, what does our district start and stop?
It goes from, um, the north end of Chestnut, it actually included the old El Mach Hotel that was at that corner, and it goes all the way down to, uh, what's First Intermark today. And mo- mostly both sides of the summit, uh, Fifth Avenue extends a little bit, includes part of the college campus, um, the Carnegie Library, and, uh, our public library is also part of the district. That's, most of it's on summit.
I so move that we, uh, consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arc City to file an application for a historic preservation fund grant for a survey of the downtown Arkansas City Commercial District, pledging matching funds or in-kind services for said grant.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion didn't carry. It's a no issue. Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, new business, uh, item number four.
Consider a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the loan agreement between the city of Arkansas City and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund Project number two eight one three.
Uh, this amendment just to change the date from the first repayment, twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, and, um, which will be February first, twenty eighteen. Other than that, nothing has changed in, in the document.
Well, and we haven't drawn any funds yet?
We have not.
Well, I so move.
I had a question.
Oh.
I mean, you can make a motion.
Yeah, I so move we approve, uh, I so move we approve the resolution to the First Amendment to the loan agreement between the, uh, city of Arkansas City and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund Project number two eight one three.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Ever, you have a question?
Yeah, so, out of that twenty-two million, I just wanna, and this is, I know we haven't drawn on that, but how much have we output so far for, towards this project?
About three point six million.
Three point six, and what, what all makes up that three point six?
Uh, the clear well and engineering.
What about the study?
Uh, the, well, that'd probably be part of the engineering study, engineering cost to date.
To date, so that goes all the way back to, what, oh nine?
I believe, CDM's costs are not included in that, is that correct? Oh, it is?
It was?
Yeah, we're gonna have a PowerPoint explaining a lot of these costs here.
Yeah, all the way back to, before I even ran, I know that, there was a, the first thing started four hundred thousand, and then it got, and then there was another study after that.
How much, how much of it though was Burns and Mack?
Eric, can you answer that?
Well, if the, the clear well's one point nine five, as I recall.
No, clear well's one point six something, well, yeah, as well be, I think we approved it to one point seven, wasn't it?
One point, I thought it was one point nine.
No, it was less than that.
So that makes three seven so far, out of?
Yeah, it's three six, we have, yeah, we got a PowerPoint, we got put together for.
Okay.
Understate manager's updates for those items, we don't have it broken down specifically, but we can get the breakdowns to date.
Should we?
We still have some money out, to outlay on the clear well though, too, so we haven't paid off the clear well completely.
We're having cash left in the utility bonds?
Two point four million in there, and we have, in the wastewater, we have three, over three million. And then in sanitation, we have about eight hundred and eighty thousand. Eight hundred and eighty.
Okay.
And what about, oh, sorry.
No, any other questions?
Yeah, what, if we didn't approve this, what would that, what would that mean?
Uh, you, basically, you'd have to, you'd be back to the original agreement, which would have the first payback due in seventeen, um, if we're to make a, a drawdown. Um, if you decide not to utilize any of these funds, then you'd have to go after private financing, have to go on the market, which then you're probably gonna look at six percent plus.
Much higher interest, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do this without jeopardizing our current loan approval, and we can change the date for the refinance, apparently, this is.
Yeah, this is them, this is them actually changing the date.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they changed the date for us.
Okay.
Given, you know, where we're at in the process, so.
Any other questions? Okay, and it's, it's been moved by Commissioner Yucovich and seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve, uh, new business item number four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five on new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a voluntary annexation agreement of Arkansas City Industries Incorporated.
Commissioners, we first discussed this issue, um, regarding the improvements at Goff Industrial Park. Uh, as you know, we are nearing the end of a, a major improvement project there, where we've widened streets, added lighting, added signage, which the commission, um, just looked at a couple of weeks ago. Um, and as part of that, there are some properties in Goff Industrial Park that are not within the city limits. We actually discussed involuntarily annexing them several months ago. Um, and Arkansas City Industries owns several of those properties, and we've been discussing with them the possibility of instead of involuntarily annexing them, because they received the benefit, uh, of these improvements, that instead, they allow us to voluntarily annex them. Uh, so, so, um, ACI was very open to this, they, um, want to contribute to the community, and they are currently paying taxes on it anyway. So we reached an agreement whereby the city would, um, annex them into the, the city limits immediately, uh, following the annexation process. Uh, and, but then ease in their additional city taxes. Um, they currently pay, um, twenty-six point seven one mils that they would no longer pay if they were in the city limits. That goes seven and a half mils to their rural fire district, eighteen point oh eight seven mils to their township, and one point one three two mils for the regional library system. Um, so that makes up twenty-six point seven one nine mils. So the agreement, um, proposes that in year one, when they pay city taxes, um, the city will rebate to them back, um, everything except twenty-six point seven one nine mils. Meaning, the city keeps what they pay now, they don't pay any more than what they pay now. And then, the city would rebate ninety percent, then eighty, seventy, sixty. And then, the city would rebate ninety percent, then eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty, forty, down to where, then there's no rebate at all. Um, so this, I, I believe this is a win-win, because, um, the city will immediately capture some tax revenue, but then the burden of additional taxes won't be immediately felt by ACI, instead it will be eased in over ten years.
What, what's changed? Cause I remember sitting out there when Jim Seibert just absolutely had a fantastic presentation why he shouldn't be annexed, and Ark City Industries shouldn't be annexed, so.
Um, it's my understanding he was just speaking on his own behalf and not on behalf of our Kansas City Industries.
Well, he was here representing them.
Well, he, yeah, but he wasn't, he's not on the board.
He even said he wasn't, he didn't represent, he's just, I believe he is a shareholder, but.
Yes, he is a shareholder, but he's not on the board.
Uh, uh, the way that I understood, this is a board decision that came down.
Any other questions?
What, what improvements are, are they having expectations that there'll be other improvements outside of what's already been accomplished?
No.
In this agreement?
No additional improvements at this time. But that said, I mean, the, there was a, over a million dollars worth of improvements made to the park.
And we're, isn't that the road we just approved last meeting to, that's in the same area?
Yes, sir.
Which, which properties are those, Nick? It's really hard to tell by the description.
The four east ones, it's the two small ones, the two sixty thousand square foot ones, not the big ones.
And Goff Industrial Road runs right in the middle of them, so there's one north and one south of Goff Industrial Road.
Is it any of the unimproved property?
We already have a substantial amount of the unimproved property that's in the city limits.
Those, those two smaller?
Correct, are coming in. The only one that's not now in the northern part is the large building. That'd be the one one, and then
Six oh, six oh one golf.
Correct.
Uh, it's not included in this.
Do you have a map of that, by chance? Can you pull up that?
I, well, I have this one here, it's quick, it's these two buildings here. The big ones coming in.
Okay.
Here's the large one, and the two small buildings would be coming in.
And then the property south is what, is the, it's already annexed?
Yeah, this property's already in.
Yeah.
Here, and already here. This is just joining up the rest of this here.
Are those two buildings occupied?
Uh, Canback, uh, occupies this building, and this building's kind of on the lease tenant arrangement of like two or three different tenants at the time, I believe.
Well, so what's the hesitation for the rest of the properties? Cause we're just creating another island.
Can't tell you this time.
We, we had talked to them about six oh one golf, um, but it, it wasn't approved by their board. Um, so our thought was, we can start here. Um, this was something we agreed on, and I, there are quite a few islands in the city limits that are surrounded by city, um, city roads, they get the benefits of city ownership. I'm hoping that this will set a precedent for other property owners, um, to, to, where we can ask them to contribute to the city as well and voluntarily annex.
Which ones are you talking about, Brandon?
Well, so like, you know.
Yeah, so six oh one becomes a true island.
Six oh one.
Yeah, it's a true island, you got Creekstone on the opposite side.
Okay, I'm not familiar with six oh one, sorry.
The, the big warehouse out in the middle of the wheat field.
Just south of Creekstone.
We actually have twelve properties that are surrounded by the city limits.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the map, can you tell where Creekstone is on that?
Yeah.
Okay, right below Creekstone, just south of it, it's six oh one golf, that, that's a separate.
Yeah, this large one.
Okay, that building, okay.
Yeah, but currently, these three buildings are out, with the city limits. Um, and then down here, these buildings, which is, here's Madison, these buildings are out at the city limits as well.
Yeah, just those three different. And Skyline is up there.
Which is all, yeah, and Skyline's up here as well. Skyline, with Golla, and then the county has a yard, which, if we annex to mint, it's not a, not a big thing.
Yeah, Skyline.
And
They don't pay taxes on it.
Alright, what about, um, so, and, and Tamra, I, I don't know your situation, I was, I called one of the ACI members I know today, and are, are you affiliated with ACI? Because he said that you were, regularly attend the meetings, or what's your affiliation?
They have retained me as a private attorney to assist them on a specific issue.
Okay, so can you fairly represent the city in this issue, as, if you're also employed by ACI?
Um, yes, the city manager and ACI are both very aware of my involvement for both entities, and they both have approved me proceeding forward with this.
Is that how that works, Nick?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the, the item she doesn't, has nothing to do with actual business-related items between the city and Ark City Industries, so there is a gap. This agreement was actually presented by me, you know, and drafted by Tamra to present to them, so it was actually, um, was initiated by myself.
Well, I guess I'd kinda like to get Chad's take on this, too, and this is the first I've seen of it, and I'd like to kinda go out and look at the properties, too, just so I understand a little bit more than a distant map, but I'd so move to table, uh, item five and new business.
I hear a second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Everie and seconded by Commissioner Jukovic to table the resolution for further consideration.
For our next meeting in April?
Yeah, next, well, next meeting's fine, and, uh.
Right here in next, in a week, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first I've seen.
Well, our first meeting in April.
But don't we have another one?
We have one March twenty-second, which is a week away.
Okay. A week away.
Okay, you want twenty-second?
It says motion.
Yeah, I, I so move postpone it to the next meeting, or table it, rather.
Okay.
I might have to take my second back, if I
I missed, I missed the next, okay.
Okay.
Let me add that, too, that he wants to table it for further consideration to our March twenty-second meeting.
Yeah, a- and, and the reason I'm doing that, too, I mean, we just got this information on Friday afternoon. Um, we've gotta, you know, gotta be a chance to digest it and get public feedback, when we, every time we just move forward with something, you know, I, I always hear about it, so.
Well, that's fine, I mean, it's, it's voluntary, they, they agreed to it, so, it doesn't matter to me, really. Yeah, I think maybe next meeting probably be okay, if, if they put it off too much longer. Okay, it's been moved, and seconded table, item number five, the new business, till March twenty-second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, new business item number six.
This, this app's actually brought up by, uh, Commissioner Everie and requested to be placed on the agenda as far as code enforcement discussion.
Yeah, you wanna start there, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
So, I'd gotten a couple complaints from citizens where, where I guess they, they don't pay their water bill, we shut their water off within the prescribed time that we're, they're scheduled to do it. And then we hang a notice on their door that says they'll, they must be moved out within seventy-two hours, and I, I think I forwarded one to you, Nick, and then I ended up seeing another one. And I, I just don't like that approach. Um, I'm not saying it's not warranted, I don't know what, the way the process is written, the way it should work. But, when you hangs, when you hang a note on somebody's door and say they gotta be out in seventy-two hours, it's just a little bit if you're not, if you're not gonna turn your water on, move out in seventy-two hours, it's just not my, uh, just not a palatable approach, is my concern.
Um, actually, you have a handout showing the utility calendar and the process that we utilized before it's sent off to, um, and, I'll have Kathy go ahead and, uh, talk a little bit about our process and, and describe when individuals call in to us, how we handle it. Um, if they don't call in to us, how do we handle it? If they never communicate with us, how it's handled, so.
I don't think I'm, I don't think I, I
My concern's not about this.
Yeah, I've got a, yeah, and this isn't the problem at all, it's just if somebody has their water shut off, can the, can the, uh, code enforcement official go and write them a, a note that looks like an official ticket that says you have to move out in seventy-two hours?
Or turn your water on.
Richard.
I mean, is that even legal to do that? I mean, how, if a landlord can't evict a tenant that quickly, how can the city do something like that?
Yes, it's, uh, part of the, uh, ordinances that you guys passed on our building codes, the plumbing code clearly states that you can't occupy a residence that does not have water, electric, or gas. It is a health issue, it is a severe health issue. So, the note was left on the door to either turn the water back on, or move out in seventy-two hours, find somebody to live with while you're trying to get the water back on. Uh, of that, I had one individual call and say, I can't make it in seventy-two hours, but I can make it in, in, by Friday. And I said, I will work with you until Friday. He came in Friday and everything was fine. Uh, the rest of them got their water back on and, and, uh, it was okay. I, I believe there was only one, I never did hear from anybody else but the, the one guy, so.
Do we, do we have the legal authority to evict somebody in seventy-two hours? I guess is my question, Tamra.
Well, it's not actually an eviction, um, if, if it's not habitable, if it's not fit for occupancy, we're not evicting them, it's just, it's not legal to be inhabited. We don't have an ownership interest, so we're not seeking to take ownership of the property, which is what happens in an eviction. Um, but by code, and, I mean, codes that we've adopted by ordinance, a house or structure isn't habitable without water, electrical.
Yeah, but most of the houses have got, I mean, on, this has all obtained the water bills, you know, those notices.
Sure.
And, as long as they got electricity, I mean, basically, they haven't paid their bill, I mean, that's what it is. I mean, and to me, that's a bad vibe, you know, when you're gonna evict somebody in seventy-two hours because of a payment, you know, that, that should have been, you know, paid, and, and it's just, to me, it's, I, I, I don't like it either, I mean, it's just that note on there that, you know, and, and I know one person in general that I'm gonna, you say his name, but, you know, he's got health problems, he could add an R TAC from that, you know, I mean, just, it's a scary situation. You know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if there's anything better, I mean, how you go about doing it, but it, this doesn't sound right.
How many days after turnoff do we actually go out there? So, once we turn the water off, how many days does that process take? With that they're actually without water? Kathy, can you answer that for me? Before we go out there and actually puts, post something on to their door?
Let me answer that by backing up. We give them twenty-five days to make their payment before it's a due date, then we give them basically another ten days before, you know, we, in the meantime, we send out reminder calls, and ten days before it's due, before we actually shut them off. And then, basically, a week after that, then, is when they go out and verify that it's off and lock it up, and then it's probably at least another several days before, um, Neighborhood Services is notified, and they take action.
So from shut off to Neighborhood Services, they could potentially be without water anywhere from
Couple weeks?
Ten to fourteen days?
Unless they
With no water in the house?
Unless
I, I understand, I think the process is fine, but the, uh, or at least that part of the process, but just the, the way, um,
Can we be more?
More like we're trying to help you understand what the codes are than we're trying to kick you out of your house.
And this is all after
Maybe a, a formal, but even just, just from a customer service standpoint, a more formal look, just, here's what the codes say, something that looks nice and doesn't look like a ticket.
Or where other resources are.
Yeah, you know, maybe, you know, the, the city ordinance says that a house without water cannot be inhabited, and, you know, you put that in nice, already-prepared font that looks, you know, and, and so that's why we're visiting you for that, and here's why, and so in seventy-two hours, you know, you should be, either find somewhere else to live, or
Yeah.
Right.
And either have it look nice and be customers, I mean, these are our customers, even if, even if they're deadbeats that didn't pay their bill, they're still our customers and our residents and our, our friends.
We have to show some compassion, too.
No, I don't mean deadbeats for the camera, no.
A lot of times, we don't even know if anybody really is in the house.
Uh-huh.
I'm guessing, anytime throughout any of this process, if they call to make arrangements, set up a contract, need assistance, we give referral sheets, information, and all that, at any time throughout this process, too, so.
Some people might, I mean
And we could put that on a form.
Yeah, I mean, something that look nice, a nice form, more of a, more of an FYI, we're trying to help you out, then, here we come to kick you out.
Yep.
And our main concern is that you're living in
Yeah, you're living in a house with no water, and who knows what your, you know, your house is gonna smell like, and how sick you're gonna be soon, and, and those kind of things.
And that's easy enough.
I, I was at one of our city parks the other day, and I was just there with my children, and a, a sedan pulled up, and a family hopped out. They opened their trunk on their car, and they, they got out about twenty-one gallon jugs from one of our parks, and filled up their one gallon jugs, and I asked them if they were camping. To my ignorance, they weren't camping, they didn't have water turned on in their home.
And that was in sedan, from sedan?
Huh?
They're from sedan?
A, a car.
Oh, they're in a car.
They were in a sedan. And, you know, no, I think they lived here, Nick, I, I, I don't know, and I, I didn't pry, and I asked them if they needed any help, and they said no. And so I, I guess, you know, and, and I don't know how the whole heat thing works, but I, I, it's my understanding, you know, as I recall, like in the it used to be Kansas Gas, you know, or One, One Gas, whatever, whatever it is now, you know, during the winter, they won't turn your gas off if it's below a certain temperature. And I, and I could be wrong, that's how it was in Missouri, and I believe it's that a way here, too, when, during the winter months. So, you know, show a little compassion, we're not, can't, the gas company doesn't kick them out, we shouldn't kick them out. You know, we're just, we gotta help these people, they're our, they're our residents, and they're our, they're our neighbors.
Now, I'm gonna be devil's advocate for a second.
Sure.
Say we contact them, and we do, and then they totally ignore us, the city, then what would we do? That's, that's true, but we still have to help them, if they, if they're ignoring the city coming after them. Then, if they say, get out of here, what's, what's left to take care of them?
But it's not their choice to live without water.
It's
It's not their choice to live without water, they don't have to use to take care of that immediately. And, and to what, you know, I'm not saying people shouldn't have water, that they need it for health reasons and those kinds of things. But there are way better ways than to compound the problem.
Well, I, I agree, Kenyon, but, like, Commissioner Everie said, they came up and filled up twenty-one gallons of, of plastic jugs, I mean
And they're all over town that are living without water, electric and gas. They're everywhere.
Then, then they, they
Administration told me about somebody that hasn't had it in six months.
They, they need help, cause they're living in
Give them the resources and tell them the comments.
But, but also, but if, if they don't wanna talk to us, I mean, I, I agree with you totally, but when they, when they don't wanna talk to the city or our officials, then what, what
For them to tell him?
What are, what are we supposed to do?
But here, here's the other thing, too, we're not just forcing them to have water. The water's the cheap part, that's only the, that's only the eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
True. Thirty-two dollars.
Thirty-two dollars.
Yeah.
Um, well, you got, yeah, but it, but it's the whole, it's the whole thing, it's the sewer and the trash, your water bill's, it, I know, what's the average, Nick, sixty-seven for a minimum user?
No, seventy, sixty-seven, seventy for minimum, yeah.
So, and, and I understand, you, they need to have trash service, too, in order for it to be a clean environment or a habitable area, but I, I don't know, I, I just feel like a more palatable approach, that's all I'm asking, and
And, and we do, if they contact us and say, you know what, I don't have about fifty bucks or twenty-five dollars, and I could pay you on Friday, we'd be like, okay, come on in. Let's get it down in writing, we'll get you turned on today. I mean, if, but if they don't call us, and they never reach out to us, and they never do anything, we have no idea if anybody's living there or not.
That's what I'm getting at, if they don't do anything, how, how do we get them to tell us that?
Yeah.
I, I guess, a- and it's not just with water, you got something else?
No, no, uh, no.
A lot of times, it's the approach, as you said, how do we go after them? And the citizens do that as, as an aggressive approach by the city, so they're gonna recoil by, by night, and by height, because you guys have all the parties scared to death.
Well, I mean, with the, with the new, new letter, maybe that'll take care of it.
Maybe that will help, but offer them a helpline, offer them something to help, other than demanding immediate eviction or however
That can be put on the sheet, Ken.
And, we had, we do, we lock us maybe, what, fifteen to twenty a month, I think is what we lock up.
And how many of those do you turn back on?
Uh, fourteen.
Okay, my point exactly.
You know You know, we, most of them, I mean, if they come in, it just depends if they come in or not. Most of them will come in eventually.
And they're probably some of the same people.
Yeah, five, well, I couldn't tell you that, I couldn't tell you.
But, but if, if the new approach would be to give them
When you lock it up, some sort of a handout, and then say, we're gonna come back in three or four When you lock it up, some sort of a handout and then say, we're gonna come back in three or four days and.
And first thought of me to help.
I never go door to door and knock and ask if people are healthy or safe. I only do it on, on a complaint-driven basis. I get this from downstairs. I have to make sure that the people are healthy and sanitary as part of my job. And so, that's when I act. If they work with me, perfect, I'll work with them.
Do you knock on their doors to do that on?
We, we knocked on all ten of the doors. Uh, there was, I'd have to ask Mike, but there was five or six that answered the doors and some that didn't answer the doors. I got one phone call from a man that didn't answer the door. He's the one that wanted to work until Friday. I said, perfect. He came in Friday and everything was fine.
Sounds to me like most of it is communication problems.
Most of my whole thing that I do is communication problems. If I leave a, if I leave a correction notice on a job and they get back with me. We can work it out. If not, they can't. Uh, I, I don't know what they're doing. I don't know.
Yeah.
If anything, so, yeah, I tell them seventy-two hours or we're gonna have to act for, on your own behalf.
Yeah, so, so what is our legal authority?
We can't have you and your kids sick.
I, I hate, I'd hate to do that, but if they don't wanna help us, I mean, if they don't wanna help us to help them. Where do we go? I mean, if they put the thing on it and they don't call you, Kenyon, or whoever.
Do you honestly believe that anybody wants to live without water? Can you sit there and say?
They shouldn't.
There's a family that wants to be in a home with no water? No.
They shouldn't.
It's humiliating for your children and it's embarrassing. But these people are afraid to make contact. You get a note like that stuck on your door, you're gonna have a percentage of people that don't know what to do and that's what happened. We got two of those in. He's now said there's ten out there. Those people all found ways to get it, sure. But some of them got charged an additional twenty-five dollars. They paid a thirty-five dollar discount fee and got charged an additional twenty-five dollars. That's sixty dollars added to your bill. So, if you didn't have any money, you just compounded the problem and they won't turn it back on unless that's paid in full.
You know, I think.
So, at what point, it was asking me, what point is it a new account? Well, it's not a new account, it's fourteen days.
Ho- hopefully, if, if we have communication between the people that get their water turned off, it's not payment, and then this new sheet that. Our city's gonna.
These are the numbers that they get very identified with and it's easy contact. This, 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 these five agencies will help.
And, and I hope when that goes out with their turnoff notice, other than when it comes to me and I'm supposed to make sure people are healthy.
Well, but they don't know that they're healthy. They don't know that they're not hauling twenty gallons of water.
If they're not living with water or sanitation, chances are them and their children are suffering. That's how I've gotta look at it.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, my, my question is, Neighborhood Services is contacted in the case that water, gas or electric. And we're speaking now in reference to water in the city, but how does that vary if, say, K G N E or um, the gas company disconnects? How's the, what's the process of contacting Neighborhood Services and just question?
Does the gas company call you?
Um, just have an idea, sitting here, listening to all of this.
Wait, 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 wait. We didn't get the, do we, does the gas company or the electric?
I have had notices from the gas company that they wouldn't turn on somebody's gas after it was turned off. Because of health, safety issues such as oxygen depletion, fireplace that, that's the only fireplace that they had in the house. So, you can't live without heat. So, therefore, I had to go down and tell them, you either have to get the proper heat on here. Or you're gonna have to move out of here and get someplace that you can be helped.
How many, how?
Not that I'm moving your furniture or evicting you or anything else.
We've had some from electric companies too. We've had electric companies.
Just get with relatives or somebody until this problem can be solved.
How many of them have fixed it? I mean.
Out, out of, out of about a half a dozen so far since I've been here, uh, four landlords wouldn't do it and the house is still sitting empty. And two, uh, two of them did go ahead and, and get a, you know, heating source in.
Well, our main concern's the water.
Right.
So, I mean, we don't have the control over electricity or the gas. That, I mean, we know that, but.
Well, I, I, it's not, I, I think if that approach was what somebody, you know, said, I'm just, you know, I don't think people. What I heard was that the people felt threatened. The way you approach it right now, I don't think people would feel threatened. I, you know, you need to either go live with your family or something.
It was only done that way, sir, to, to, to show them the, the emergency of the situation after they had had time.
And so that.
I, I just was trying to make sure that the families were going to be taken care of.
That's what I think our. And I agree, that's what our approach needs to be, is that we have codes on the books for you, you know, for the safety and sanitation of our overall city and. You know, here's some agencies to call or maybe you can live with family until you have, until you can get this fixed. I mean, that's a good approach. It's just, what I heard was that the citizens that were approached didn't feel like that was the, that it was more of a. You know, more of a heavy-handed, almost like the police are coming, the police will be here in two days and, and escort you out with a gun if you don't uh, do what we say.
I can appreciate that.
I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll try to either lock up or shut off. Probably when they lock up, for sure, we'll make sure we have the hanger with all the information.
Yeah, something, yeah, I mean.
A food contact, so on and so forth, potential violations, so on and, and just kind of listed.
Maybe even a list in the code that says you can't live here like this. If they know that it's, I mean, it really, you know, the really.
Cause our meter readers have to go.
City code says it. It's not just this guy who's mad at me, cause I didn't pay the bill and they're mad at me at City Hall. But it's really, it's in the code for sanitation reasons and, and.
May, maybe we can find a way to charge them ten dollars a month for the reconnect instead of making it be sixty-five dollars or whatever. If they're having trouble and they've made an attempt. I mean, there's always, always ways to, I mean, it may not work. But I mean, we can always try it. If it doesn't work, we can always change back.
We waive a lot of fees, don't we, Kathy, as, as far, as far as those go?
Do you think these are gonna assist in the payment they do?
Mr. Brown. Too many Browns here. Mr. Brown.
Uh, listening here, I, I found there's a, a sense that these people are afraid to come in because they're gonna be charged extra. For a new uh, installation. Why not waive the, the twenty-five dollars or whatever it is? Just uh, reinstate them there without that fine and maybe then you can charge ten dollars, fifteen dollars and give them a chance, give them some respect that way.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking. I mean, if, if they're working with us, if they don't work with us, I mean, that's a different story.
If they don't, then there's nothing you can do.
Right.
If they come in voluntarily and a note can be placed that these come in and will work with you.
Come in.
Yeah. Well, when I first, just to get, you go back several years, when I first got here, they didn't work with anybody, period. I mean, they didn't care. They never worked with anybody. Whatever was in the policy was in the policy. And we've, we've drastically went the other way where if someone calls and tells us they got issues, it's gonna be a while before they can pay us. We work with them. I mean, we do everything in our power to make sure they can get assistance if they can. We, um, you know. Even if they have their water turned off and they come in and pay at four forty-nine or four fifty-nine and they want it turned back on. I mean, we'll call, you know, Eric will go out and turn water service on. I've turned water service on. I mean, we'll find someone to turn them on if they need it turned on immediately. I mean, we do everything we can. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
If you guys don't mind, I'd like to put a little plug in for some of the customer service things and items that we are doing. Since we've implemented the meter project, I will say that we've gone above and beyond as far as customer service. Cause we're able to monitor uh, slow leaks, leaky toilets and stuff. Some of the problems we had in the past, we flat didn't know people had water leaks. There were small leaks, leaky faucets, leaky toilets, add up over the span of thirty, sometimes thirty-five days. When people get their bill, they flat can't afford it. What we've done with the new meters and the meters that have been installed, the day we notice a leak. We put a door hanger. We tried to call them, but a lot of the numbers are wrong in our system. Uh, if we're unable to reach them, we actually send a person over to that house and we hang a door and said, hey, it appears you may have a possible leak. Please call us and we have um, frequently asked questions, like where can my leak be coming from? How do I fix it? Who do I contact? We wanna head this off before their bill gets so big that then they're behind the gun and they, they shut off and then possibly a twenty-five dollar charge. And so, you know, we're kinda trying to think outside the box here. I'd like to come up with other solutions for customer service to prevent them from having the undue expense. And so, this next phase for meter projects, we're hoping to kick off in April. Um, and that will replace every meter in town. It'd be nice to have, offer that to every customer in our whole city, that the second we detect a possible leak, that, that we go put a door hanger. Please call us. We'll walk you through the process. We wanna keep people from having these large bills and getting behind the gun, so just wanna put that a little.
How, how many of the meters are installed now?
We have about one-third of all the residential meters.
Left or to do?
We got two-thirds left to do.
Oh, okay.
So, if we start in April, uh, we're looking at probably late July, first of August, before we have system-wide uh, meter replacements in. And being able to, to instantaneously flow. People are able to come in now and, and look at their hourly, daily usage. Um, it's real apparent when they fill their pool, you can see it, or they irrigate. That helps too and people, um. One of the things we need to talk about is leak credits. I don't think that we'll necessarily need to offer that anymore. Because we're gonna notify that customer immediately when we detect something abnormal from their average usage. Um, but some of the things that, that we can offer to customers, they can look at their graph, their daily usage. Uh, they can see their peak times. Do they, when they do laundry in the evening, it's apparent on a daily graph. When they get home, you know, and when they're doing laundry, when they're irrigating their yard, so those are all things that are gonna be at the fingertips of all our customers here shortly.
Which ones did we start with? The high, the one, the old ones like we talked about?
The average age, old ones, I would say, but we, we wanted to keep it into segments and not hop all over town. Some of our meters, if we look at the actual meter age, it's pretty sporadic. So, we took like the average age of this quadrant seemed older, so we hit that first.
Which area towns have we done so far? I think I got a new one. I mean, it's got the deal on and the, does that mean it's a new meter?
Uh, we've done.
Not necessarily. There's still touch reads.
I think most of the ones.
It says census.
But I think almost all of them, um, east of the river have been replaced. And um, but like even in Forest Glen, that happened to be a quadrant, there's a lot of older meters. The Forest Glen meters aren't that old. But since they were there, we went ahead and replaced them, so we weren't hopping all over town trying to save costs for the installation.
Are we installing those or is that the Netflix?
We're installing a lot of the bigger meters.
Flex net, Netflix, whatever it is.
Yeah, their contractor is, is on board to install the uh, the residential meters. Their cost that they gave us to install the larger meters, like the two-inch and larger, um, seemed pretty high, so we're doing those in-house over the last year. So, we've, we've done probably twelve um, in the last four months, Jason and his crew. We've got eight left to do on the big meter side, um, as far as in-house in, in installation. We're trying to keep all this in budget. We're trying to come under budget on that, but. But the customer service side, I think back to uh, people not being able to pay their bills. I'm hoping we can head this off early and often, uh, to provide a better customer service for, for all of our customers.
So, one thing that is just, it's an idea from, is uh, maybe something for the training would be a little bit of role play. I know that's a, when I was, whenever we do financial advisor training and there's role plays, we hate it. Cause it's so uncomfortable, but it's always really good.
Okay.
Or that, or, you know, or uh, role play phone calls if somebody calls in distraught to the, you know, to the city or billing. Uh, you know, how to handle that in a way that helps the person, helps the person feel digna, digna, you know, still have dignity.
Yeah, I, I.
Cause if you don't, if you'd have never done it before and they call in.
Right.
You're not gonna know how to, I mean, it just isn't.
Well, I can tell you that the two individuals we have front that handle these calls, they are top-notch when it comes to that. I mean, they, they do everything in their power to make sure that the individuals are aware of what entities to contact, um, what can be done. And, and they're very professional and courteous on the phone. You know, they've been sitting out in my office now, you know, three months. So, I've been able to hear them and how they engage public and, and considering what some of the exchange that goes on, they do a great job.
Yeah. I, I don't know where they can, I'm, that's, I'm not criticizing anyone, just that's an idea then to help it also to be consistent all the way through the organization.
Also, I just.
Comment.
Mr. Brown, you're. It's Brown.
The gas company has a little deal where you pay five dollars a month for those who cannot pay it. Could the city here put that on their bills that they send out? And people can voluntarily, once a month, pay five dollars maybe for those people that cannot afford uh, their water bill?
We've actually talked about uh, putting in place, and if there's an organization that, that would be set up, a good nonprofit set up to handle this. But given like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to this organization to fund for those individuals that can't pay their water bills. And so, we'd actually have them go to them, just like we would Salvation Army or, or whoever it may be. And they would have a pool of money from the city to pay for their utilities, for their water utility. I mean, it wouldn't be for electric or anything else. It'd be specific to the water. Um, I think Westar Energy has a similar product, product that they do, and I don't know how they fund it or how much of it is available. But I do know that they have some funds that are available for that as well. And so, that's kind of what we're wanting to do and get to that point. And uh, with the new meters, being able to get rid of the leaks, the major, big bills anyway. Um, then potentially, we can lower the amount of calls that we have and, and issues potentially we have in the long run.
How close are you to having that set up?
We, to be honest, we just find it, who's gonna do it, who's gonna administer it, you know, that we can give public funds to and have, have the accountability. And make sure we know how those funds are utilized. And um, there are entities set up, it's just a matter of trying to figure out which one. And who, who do you really want to be in charge of that?
That's tough, that's a tough question.
Yeah.
And it really is.
And who vets it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, cause that's the key. Because you could may have the same people, you do use it every month, you know, and, and um.
Yeah, I was thinking about that too.
And so, that's why, and but we can't, we're not set up for that and they're not gonna come to us to do that. I mean, that's, that would, that's a role for a nonprofit, a, a community organization that helps people. Um.
Yeah, I agree that with you on, on that, somebody would be using it every month and they know that, and that's not as for.
But they're, they get really good about that. Kenny can tell you firsthand, they, they learn the individuals. And, and they talk to one another quite well as far as the organizations go. Um, it's just trying to find that one that we would designate as being the keeper and distributor of funds. And set up as, like I said, as a nonprofit to make sure that we have the accountability and tax purpose, so on and so forth, so.
I guess the other item.
Anything else?
Well, the other item I had about that, and you know, I'm just getting the information literally secondhand, Mr. Brown. There was a resident that on, on Second Street that had a house that the foundation was, was caved in and. Uh, allegedly, we told this gentleman that it was in, maybe living at the house, that we would tear his house down within ten days and. Um, I don't know if that's exactly how the story went, i- if to some degree, and I, I don't think we need a testament to it necessarily, but. I guess, I guess my point is, is it escalated quickly, uh, and we just gotta take a palatable approach and, and at all cost. I mean, you know, these are our neighbors and it, it's, it's not easy for everybody.
That's not anywhere near the story, but I won't go into it.
And that's fine. And, and I, I just, we, you know, there's, there are instances like that. And I, and I, I've never dealt with you firsthand, but I've dealt with other code enforcement officers personally, uh, and professionally. And, and, and sometimes it does feel like you're being attacked. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be real honest with you and, eh, whether you, it's just the way it is, so.
Pride myself to try and work with people and, and I have pretty good luck most of the time. Uh, again, if, if there's no communication, there's no work. I can't work with them if I can't talk to them or, or communicate with them.
Sure, absolutely.
But I, I do try to work with anybody that, that comes along.
And sometimes.
Down at eighteen hundred block of Second Street, there's an old house that's fallen down. Kid living in a camper. I left a, a tag on his door. He can't live in a. I left a a tag on his door. He can't live in a camper. That's not appropriate living conditions. He didn't get a hold of me, so I posted the property condemned. He come in today. He's willing to work with me. I said, fine, I won't issue any citations. We'll start working on it and get your, the owner of the property come in and get a demolition permit. We'll work together. And I always try to solve it that way. Nonetheless, you guys charged me with a quite a job to enforce these codes, sir. And ultimately, for safety and health reasons, I have to do that at the end result.
I understand. There's a lot of houses.
There's a lot of houses that need to be eradicated in this city, bad. Because I actually have rats going from one house to the other and people with kids trying to play out in the ground. And tell me, they've had rats crawl over their kids' feet. I mean, all kinds of stuff that's going on.
That's why we.
So, all I can do is tag them right now. So, I tag them right now.
A foot.
It's open carry right now.
Yeah, well, you do have our job and we'll try to make.
And I'm not complaining. I'm just trying to, trying to express to some people, I really do pride myself in trying to work with people. There comes a point in time with no communication or anything else, I have to get very forceful.
Totally, totally understand that because I, you know, that happens.
And I can understand too, everybody has had a bad experience in the past too, already brings that to.
I did too.
Already brings that to you before you even come to their door, so I can appreciate that.
I do understand the shock of the the note. I can soften that up and I will, but eventually I do have to enforce it, so.
I guess my final question, what what is our legal authority? Do we, can we evict somebody more or less or or within seventy-two hours?
For health purposes, yes, sir. I can, I can have.
How's that process work? How do we, how do we know that?
Well, essentially, we find that it's unsafe for human habitation. We don't take ownership of it. We're not doing anything with the property. We just tell them that nobody can live there until it is safe.
And how do we enforce that?
Well, we can enforce it a couple of ways. If someone returns, we could issue them a citation in municipal court for returning to a property that's unsafe. We could.
I mean, can we legally walk in there and kick them out of their home without, you know, going to court?
My building?
Well, can we go inside their house? We may have to get a search warrant or an administrative search warrant through district court to actually go in if they don't let us in, which we have done that before. And and we certainly can. Do we have legal authority to to tell them the house is not habitable and to order them to vacate? We do. Because we have police powers for health, safety, and welfare.
But I stopped short of going in and moving them out. I do come to Tamara, we go to the district court, get a court order to go in, assess the situation, and then get the court to evict them out.
Do we, how how often do we do that?
Hardly, hardly ever. Usually, I can work with them after that point when they finally realize how severe it really is.
One time in ten years. I've been involved in it. And and it was, that was a mental health issue with the tenant.
So, there's another thought process just from the customer service standpoint. If we have that timeline, the general timeline would be like if you're not out in seventy-two hours, then we could go to district court and get a search warrant. Just even if, even if we're not going to do it, just to say this is the, this is the, would be the procedure, so please come talk to us.
And and the way the note's written, in all honesty, it sounds like it's something we do regularly. I mean, it looked like a ticket from from Chief Ward saying here, you know, game over, folks, you know.
And before they get the ticket, the the red sticker, dangerous structure on their, on their structure, they they get a letter and plenty of time to answer back.
Okay.
They do get that.
Yeah, I think they just.
And again, I took responsibility for that sticker. I can soften that up, but eventually I will have to.
And I understand. If it goes to that, that's fine.
But I agree with you.
No, I.
Yeah, you've got to because it will.
Eventually, would would we be liable for them in an unhealthy house?
No.
No.
Okay.
We don't have liability for that.
But the more you, the more you allow, the more you get.
Yeah. The more you, how do you get the way they are now?
Well, and you can get in a problem if you don't ever enforce, and then you start enforcing against one person, you can ask for trouble. That's why we just enforce everything as written, but with, using discretion, of course.
Okay.
That's good.
It's one, it's my understanding, and you can correct me, man, you're smarter than I am. Once I initiate an action that is unsafe and unsanitary, if I drop it, then I could be liable personally for not following through. Yeah, I could.
Not, not, not.
I'm not going to admit liability for the city. Every, every liability issue, as I said on another issue, it varies back, back specific. But if you do have notice of something, part of the duties that the city commission has charged you with is to ensure the safety and and enforce those codes when there's an unsafe situation.
One of the other things which I'll need to be aware of that I was told by a person in administration is that they have the power and authority, it was given to them by a commission, that they can call Westar and shut off the electric or shut off the gas. They can have meters pulled. So, if it, if it went from the water is off, I was told not less than a week ago that they could call Westar and have the electric shut off, whether the bill's paid or not, and they could call gas company and have the gas turned off, whether it's paid or not.
That is not correct. I have never shut power off of any structure that is occupied.
I didn't, I didn't.
I have shut off power to buildings that that are condemnable, that are hazardous. Yes, I have.
But Mike, what I was saying is somebody from administration said they have the power to do that.
I'd never said.
I didn't, I didn't say anything.
Okay.
So. But when we were talking, you said we could have that, we could do this, we could remove kids, but we don't.
But not while someone's living there. Once we get them, if we have to evict, we can have them evicted. And then we can turn power off and gas off and water off to try to prevent someone from trying to move back in or whatever. That's right.
Is that, is that under our ordinances?
Yes. On danger structures, yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
I was going to have Chief Ward just talk a little bit about the enforcement side and and he just has a few items he just wanted to give to the commission for discussion.
Are you sure you want to go?
Sure. It's, it's really, it's a minor thing that we're trying to achieve here. I think to get a full understanding of it, we need to back up and look at the history. This all started several years ago, long before I was here. The animal control officers and code enforcement were writing citations for code violations, but they didn't have the authority to do so. State law says that only law enforcement officers or the municipal court can do that. Without a a charter ordinance, then they didn't have that authority. When City Manager Hernandez came in, he pointed this out and said, wait, we can't do this because we don't have the authority to do so. At that time, it was decided to place code enforcement and animal control all under a police department umbrella and label it as police service officers. The way we could actually be able to continue doing citations would be that the officers that work in that position would go to a two-week academy, which is classified by the state as a part-time police officer position, which gives them the power of writing citations and power of arrest. When I came on board then, I was not comfortable with that. I don't believe that the power of arrest should be with a person who is not fully trained as a police officer. That's also not something that is the standard for accreditation, so it didn't fit our model of what we're trying to go with best practice. If you remember, we then made the policy decision to change the PSOs from police service officer to a public service officer, which we're not sending them to the two-week academy. They don't have the powers of arrest. Unfortunately, the downside is they also don't have the power to write NTAs anymore. This has helped us a great deal because prior to that, we were having a turnover rate of about fifty percent in the two years because of trying to keep that position filled, because of the number of duties they had, the fact that they were part-time police officers, but the pay was very low, and the fact that we were only attracting people who really wanted to be a police officer, but maybe couldn't be a police officer. This has opened it up. We now have people in those positions that are great employees that we would not have been able to put in those positions as as the PSO originally was. So, that has stabilized that. But unfortunately now, if an animal control officer or a code enforcement officer or the fire chief finds a violation of city code and needs a citation written for that, they have to call an officer, a uniformed officer off of patrol duty to come and issue that citation. All that officer does is fill out a piece of paper. He is told or she is told what the the violation is, how to write it. They have nothing to do with it. If that goes to court, that officer does not even testify as to the violation. That the PSO, the the fire chief, the the code enforcement officer, those are the ones who actually testify on that. So, basically, we are having a really bad use of very limited resources with the police officer. This charter ordinance that has been put forth, Tamara put it together. The charter was actually modeled after the the charter ordinance in Lawrence. This is a standard practice that I'm very used to. We've done it my, pretty much my entire career. We had a full staff of animal control officers and parking control officers. Quite a few civilian individuals who were able to write citations and did so on a regular basis and did so quite easily. This charter ordinance doesn't change anything about how we do business, other than who's filling out that piece of paper. Is it going to be a police officer that we're paying a great deal of money for, who we train a great deal just to go fill out a piece of paper? Or we're going to let the individuals who were there at the time recognizing the the problem go ahead and take that action that they have decided to take? It doesn't change any of the procedures on how that enforcement takes place. The same people are making decision what is going to be enforced, when it's going to be enforced. It, the same safeguards are in place. We all have supervisors that we answer to all the way up through the chain. There's also the prosecutor who reviews all the notices to appear. And if there's a a problem brought to her attention, then she will take care of it and and address that issue. And of course, ultimately, the judge, who has cases brought before him, will make that decision as to what is the proper thing to do. This doesn't change in any way anybody's due process or right to to contest a notice to appear. I want to make sure and be clear here, a notice to appear is just that. It's just a notice to appear to answer. It's not an arrest. It's not a admission of guilt. That is determined by the court.
How many public service, public service officers do we have today on staff?
We are, we are currently at two. Originally, when this all started, we were at three, and we are now staffed at two.
Are we, is our police department fully staffed or are we still minus one? Because I think you said we were at capacity, but then that was with shedding one.
No, we are, we are currently our full sworn number. We are down three positions. In twenty sixteen, I did not budget one of those positions because I moved that money off into other areas to make the budget work. So, technically, I'm down two positions, but the sworn authorized strength, we'd be at three. But I'll be honest with you, I don't see ever being able to reach that because I can't find that many people to hire.
So, we're short two?
We are, we are in the process of hiring. I have one person who is in the background phase right now, and we hope to have an offer to that individual here shortly. And then the the last position that's currently open, we just completed our our process, and I have no other applicants, so we'll have to start another process.
So, the public service officers that we have today, not not your police service officers, but the public service officers, what are their normal day-to-day activities?
They handle evidence custodian. One of the employees we were able to hire was a police officer that worked for us who ended up having a medical condition that precluded him from continuing as a police officer, but we now have him as our evidence custodian. I can't tell you how pleased I am with the fact that I have somebody who is a trained police officer that I have complete trust in taking care of my money, guns, and drugs, because that is an area that can really lead to big problems for police departments if you don't have the right person in there. They take care of evidence. They take care of animal control. They take care of municipal probation. They take care of municipal court duties on Tuesdays. And also, they have been working and doing a lot of the code enforcement. With this charter change, that would shift back over to code enforcement, and that would relieve some of those duties. So, my my goal is they'd have more time for animal control, which I think we all can agree is something that we need more of.
On this, you said, well, I mean, on the, on the ordinance, we've got animal control, code enforcement, and fire department who essentially tells them to put that notice to appear on somebody's door through it. Is that ultimately your job or is it going to be one of the employees under to make that final decision?
Yeah, and currently, the way it is, let's let's say Mr. Brown determines that somebody needs a citation because they're in violation of a, an ordinance or a code violation. He will call and he'll ask for an officer to come. The officer will fill out the the citation as he says to fill it out, and then the officer will serve it for him. This charter ordinance would just allow him to be able to serve it. So, it's still under his authority, just as it is now. He's making that decision. The police officer doesn't, in this current case, have any decision-making process in it.
Has there ever been a time where a police officer refused to issue this citation because they didn't agree with the the assessment?
Not that I know of. In fact, what I have heard from the officers is, I don't know. I don't have a clue. They just tell me what to write.
How how much, your your current officers that have this authority and the power that to to serve somebody, what's the minimal amount of training that they have when we hire an officer? Is it like, I know it's an academy. Is that?
The academy is fourteen weeks, and then we also have a fourteen-week field training program in which they ride with a field training officer. And that that can, that's a fourteen-week minimum. That can extend and oftentimes does extend a little bit further than that, depending on what they're able to achieve. But what I want to make sure that I'm very clear about here is the big difference here is being able to take somebody's liberty away from them, make a physical arrest, and just issuing a citation. A notice to appear is a whole lot different, and that can be done by a citizen. I don't believe that taking physical custody of somebody and taking their liberty away should be done by anybody who is not fully trained as a police officer.
Sure, and and I respect that. I I think that's, I mean, you guys, I I will say this. I mean, I I've been pulled over by your officers and and they're professionals. I mean, they they are trained to handle people at at all cost, even whether you're compliant or not. I mean, you guys handle your people well, and for the most part, I'm sure there's instances where it doesn't go as planned. But overall, you know, you guys have that training. You're good at it. I I just don't like that. I mean, I had a code violation at one point or an alleged code violation, and I got a certified letter in the mail. That worked. It was appropriate. I, it was a notification that says, hey, you got a problem with neighborhood services? Need to call them and dress them. To me, I felt like that was far more appropriate, even though I would appreciate it, a courtesy call versus a certified letter. But it's, it's a lot more palatable to to me, Neighbor Joe, versus getting summons to appear when I have to take time out of my day when you tell me I have to appear at a known time. So, you know, I got to either go take vacation or if I don't have vacation, I've got to beg for time off of work and and most generally. And, and most generally, the people that, I mean, I, I, maybe I'm not an exception, but. I, I don't know. It just doesn't feel palatable to me. And I, I guess my next question is, Mr. Brown, how many times a day do you have to call a PSO to issue a citation?
I, I really try not to do that. I haven't called him but one time, and that was today.
Yes, it was.
So, I mean.
And then I told the chief before this meeting.
And, just a minute, Canyon. Just a minute, okay. Go ahead, Mr., Mr. Brown. Go ahead, start again. I didn't hear what you said, cause.
I, I just said, I went ahead and told him today before this meeting that I wouldn't be these services after all. I wasn't gonna write the guy, that was the guy that came in and talked to him today.
Okay. So, so we're, so how many notices?
After he was served, and after he got a vet.
How, how many notices do you normally send out, say, just a month? Can you tell me that? Is it less than five?
It depends on when it is. If, if you're talking about during the growing season, when people aren't cutting their lawn.
Oh, okay. I understand that.
It's a full-time job.
And, and that's when the citations would have to be written, would be in those periods of time. Very seldom on a structure or a, a problem or something like that. Usually letters, conversations, and working gets that seldom. But during the nuisance part of, of the job, there's a lot of citations, notices.
And I wanna make sure that I'm very clear in my communication here. Nothing in this ordinance, charter ordinance, says that any of these civilian individuals have to write a no- notice to appear. It just means that they have the ability to. So when it comes to that point, they can do it without a police officer. And I gotta tell you, if you're wanting to, if you want, wanting to work with people and have a softer sell, not having a uniformed officer is one way to do so.
It very much is. I hate to take an officer with me.
See, I, I kinda disagree. I, when, when your officers, and I, and I know I've told you this before, but when you guys were in, not in uniform a few years back. I, I had less respect for you. Honestly, I really did. I mean, I, I have a pair of five and, five eleven pants and a collared shirt. I don't have a uniform. I mean, that, that speaks authority, and that's my point. You have the authority to issue a, a appear, or a citation, or an arrest. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I don't feel like you have that authority, nor the training, to, to do those types of activities, and, and. I, I just don't feel that way. I feel like you guys have that, and, and I, I just don't get it. I don't see it. What, Dan, do you have some?
I do. So you've come from other departments also and seen them, and with the accreditation process. Is this normal, that the code enforcement, or the police, or the fire chief too, could issue a citation?
Yes, from Lawrence, the fire department would issue citations for any fire code violations. For instance, when we would go in on a bar check, and we'd see there'd be too many people there, we'd just call dispatch and say, can you have fire department respond for overcrowding? They'd respond, and they'd take care of it, and they'd do whatever they did. We wouldn't even stick around. They had a full crew of code enforcement officers that were actually officers that retired or left the police department, or the fire department, and went to work there as a second job. And they handled all the code enforcement issues. They were down at city hall, they weren't part of the, the police department. I actually was in charge of the, what we called park, bark, and cross for a while, which was animal control, parking, and crossing guards. And I had a, I had a full staff of animal control officers and parking control officers, who issued citations all day long, every day. And it worked out quite well.
What kind of training did they have?
Same as what, what any citizen does here. They didn't go to the part-time academies, they didn't have the in-service requirements. They just, they had the policies and procedures and, and the supervisors guiding them on the job training.
You know, this was brought up about a year or two years ago, and we kinda tabled this thing, just to kinda go away for the time being and stuff. And I gotta agree with Brandon in the sense that, you know, I think a police officer looks, looks, it looks a lot better. And my, you know, the reason why I didn't like it to begin with is, you know, is the proper training that that person, you know, is gonna have to go out there, you know? I mean, I just didn't feel like it, you know, that, I just think it looks better, you know? I don't know.
I, I'd be more apt to get you another public service officer, and I, and I mean this, and I, I know it's gonna take some budget. But I'd be more apt to figure that out than, than to go this path.
They don't, they don't issue citations either.
Yeah, public ser- public service officers won't issue a citation.
Notice to appear is what we're talking about.
Right. Citation, notice to appear, synonymous. The, the only issue here is that.
So your public service officers can't do this, eh, can't, uh?
Because we don't send them to the part-time academy anymore, because I don't want them to have the power of arrest. Which also strips them of the power of, of writing a notice to appear.
Is there an option?
Can we just, can we make the ordinance to give them just the people that are under the police department, and not everybody in the city?
You, you could, but then you're putting an inordinate amount of work on an overpopu- or over.
That you finally have people that stick around.
Yes, for, for a very low pay.
Did I understand the question correctly, though? Cause I, I asked Mr. Brown, how often do you do this, and he said never, or rarely, for first time.
But what they're really talking about is the nuisance, the grass mowing and stuff, what they're.
He hasn't been here yet during the grass mowing.
No, this was just strictly code-related today.
During, during the grass season, I actually have one of those two PSOs do pretty much nothing but address grass complaints. And I usually hire in a person about twenty-five, thirty hours a week from our group to assist.
But what are, but what are they doing? What, what's the PSO doing then?
They, they go through the procedure on how to, to do the enforcement. So they get the complaints that are coming through, through Eric's office, and they go out and verify the complaint, they notify the individual, they, they document it. A lot of times, people are actually not here, the landlord, landlords are somewhere else, and so we have to send the certified letters. And make the notice, and then follow up on it in the appropriate amount of days for the enforcement, or determine whether or not it's been taken care of.
So is that process not working?
It is, but it takes one and a half people during the growing season, and I don't have that.
I, I guess that's why I'm asking, though. You, that's, that's part of your justification, is you're having a PSO do that, but a PSO can't do that. So I'm trying to understand.
For the citation part of it, when it gets to the citation, then they have to call in the officer to do it.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I heard from Mr. Brown is the citation part doesn't happen that often. A certified letter part happens, sounds like regularly.
Yes.
Well, I mean, if that's working, why are we changing something that's working?
The, and, and, but it does happen with the growing season. I don't think he's been here for the growing season, he's not familiar with it. The officers do have to go out with them and, and write citations. And then the other one that's big is the animal control portion of it. Every animal we pick up, there is a citation involved in that.
Lot of animals.
Lot of animals, absolutely. And, and I understand your thoughts on having a police officer there and the appearance. But I'm, I am here to tell you, it's just appearance, because those police officers have nothing to do with this process whatsoever, other than filling out a piece of paper.
So.
They don't make the decision, they don't have any part in this process on prosecution, they don't do anything but fill out a piece of paper.
Well, I move we table this till our next meeting?
Yeah, I actually wasn't even up for approval. It was just discussion.
I just leave it as discussion, that if things get really worse down the road, maybe we take another look at it, I mean.
Yeah, we can bring it back up when the growing season gets going, April, May.
That'd be good to have numbers of how many times a police officer had to go out and.
And I, I apologize, when this came up, I think the first time was a year or so ago, we did have numbers. Something I had the captain work on. The captain is actually graduating from the academy on Friday, and so he'll be back, so he'll be able to, to gain some, some statistical data for that.
So all we have to do is just do nothing on it?
Yeah, it wasn't meant for, for any action.
All right. Any other updates, Mr. Manager?
Uh, city manager updates.
Eric? Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. If you guys are well aware of, I think March tenth, we opened bids for the Phase Three, the water treatment plant. So, in order to provide as much transparency as possible, I want to get basically a high-level presentation to you guys this evening to pull over, think of questions. Also notify the public and kind of what we've looked at, the whole bid process. And then, as you know, we've scheduled a special meeting on March twenty-second, to where action could be taken to award the project. But before we got to the twenty-second, I wanted to get as much of this information out in the public as we can. So again, I just have a few slides, and I won't take up much of your time, but kinda wanna give you a quick little overview. Andrew, you can help me, I already hit that button. Okay. Historical cost estimate analysis. This is what we put together for this estimate, was going back to two thousand and six. We, we've actually been working on the plant projects since two thousand and three, but two thousand and six was a study. There is what they call CCI, that's a construction cost index, that we can translate dollars that may have been estimated back in two thousand and six to today's dollars. So we've applied the CCI index to all the estimates that we've had. And so we broke it down in estimate type. So two thousand and six, the only scope the MKDC had was, what's it gonna take to rehab the existing facility? That's, that's it. That's all they were to look at. They wouldn't look at feasibility options. Anyways, thirteen million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, translated to today's cost, seventeen million, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, one hundred and fifty-eight. Or seventeen million, I'll just round it to seventeen point seven million. I wanna point out that MKDC's estimate did not include non-component, non-construction costs. Non-component are those things, architecturally, elevators, ADA, those things that aren't directly associated with, with treatment. So it was strictly looking at processes in the water treatment plants. They didn't even look at things outside the building or anything architecturally or structural. They also didn't include any construction costs. That's what PEC did in two thousand and twelve. So they took the MKDC estimate, and they said, okay, here's all their component costs, let's look at rehabbing, and they updated it. And you see in two thousand and twelve, to rehab the existing facility was twenty point, almost twenty point eight million. And then today's cost, twenty-one point eight million, so it's increased about a million. They also estimated a new conventional water treatment plant. Again, they did not look at any source water quality issues. MKDC studied the source water. They thought the water quality, that was not part of PEC's scope to, to look at. They priced the new conventional water treatment plant, today's cost, about twenty-five point five million. Then they also priced the new membrane plant, and today's costs were over thirty million dollars, thirty, thirty point eight million. At that point in time, that was a design build. We felt like there were some efficiencies that we could find. Also, based on their matrix, if you guys remember, we presented this to you in the past, that based on the matrix and. PEC actually recommended the new conventional water treatment plant first, and real close, close second was the, was the membrane plant. And the, the difference it came in second was because of cost. It was quite a bit more expensive. But it has so many more advantages as far as being able to expand, contract, the, the overall footprint of the project. That's why it scored so high, even though it, it was very costly. We felt there were some efficiencies that could be had going the traditional design bid build. Had a study, CDM, you guys are familiar with that. Look at more the tradi- traditional design bid build, and the estimate on that project was twenty-six, almost twenty-seven million dollars, in today's cost. It was estimated in twenty thirteen. Things that we've done, we brought on Burns and McDonald, and we said, we're gonna have to, if you guys remember. We had asked for approval for a loan amount of twenty-five million from the state revolving loan fund, from KDC. At that point in time, the estimate was twenty-six million, we said, we think we can do it for twenty-five million. The commission walked out and challenged us, challenged staff, challenged the public. They only authorized up to twenty-two million. We knew we had our work cut out for us. And so this is kind of a overview of what we have done to date to start cutting costs. From the twenty-six, almost twenty-seven million dollars, twenty-seven in today's cost. So we eliminated injection, injection well, that's part of the reason why this project has strung out so long, is because we fought tooth and toenail to get these savings. We were able to reclassify our source water, so we were able to eliminate the MFUF filters and replace them with green sand filters. Right off the tops, in capital cost, saving almost one point five million. Moved it to gas fire, chlorine contact basin, transfer pump station. And then we also separate bid packages for clear well and waste line. And that may not seem like a big deal to you guys, but with the tank package, breaking this thing up. For one, the, the general contractor likely adds ten percent to any subs. If we put all this together, preload out there, just building the tank, we got bids for about one point seven million, can add ten percent to that. If the GC was gonna have preload as a sub. Plus, they still couldn't do much work, as you've seen the laydown area out there, so you kinda gotta wait for them to get out of the way. So it costs a little bit of money to create our own bid package, let preload go. There's no contractor markup on that, as far as the GC. That's gonna wrap up in about thirty days, just in time for the water treatment plant. In fact, this week, they're gonna finish putting the final coat on the, on the clearwell tank, and we'll start painting and putting the brick pilasters up next week. And within thirty days, they should be out of town. Total savings, though, from the CDM cost estimate, roughly four point one million. And again, this project, we have worked hard for three and a half years. We've had a lot of public input, a lot of good concepts, a lot of good ideas that have, that have come to the forefront. That has challenged us to come up with these costs. Let's see, did I miss something? Oh, and by eliminating the MFUF and changing the source water, this last little bullet here, and it'll come up on a, on a future slide. We are gonna have additional and long-term cost savings expected for the operation and maintenance of the water treatment plant due to the source water reclassification. And that's due to reporting and KDC requirements. So again, in summary, we split the project into four, four basic phases. Phase one was, of course, the, the pre-stress concrete tank, was awarded April eighth, two thousand and fifteen, a preload. Phase two, we brought to you guys for the reverse osmosis, green sand equipment, pre-procurement, and piloting. So we've completed all that. What we did, went through a long procurement, so basically get competitive bids from different vendors, meeting very stringent specs. And then they had to prove those, they had to prove that they could do what they said they could do by piloting the project, and they, and they all did. Phase three, which is what will be before you, we opened bids on March tenth, twenty sixteen. We will be prepared at the next meeting, March twenty-second, have a special meeting. And we'll have the Burns and McDonald team here to answer any technical questions, but we wanna make a recommendation for award on March twenty-second. And then phase four, the final phase, will be the waste stream pipeline, spaces, the pipeline going to the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, we're scheduled to receive bids August of this year. Here is updated construction cost and estimate. Phase one, tank, originally bid for one point seven million. We actually have a deduct amount right now. So that, that project, I don't see any change orders coming. We should finish out at one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand. There's some change. The RO green sand equip, green sand equipment that we pre-selected and piloted. Three point three seven four million. I'll put an asterisk there, because that cost, you see right here, has been assigned to the water treatment plant. When we opened the water treatment plant bids on the tenth, the low bid, basically excluding the green sand equipment, thirteen million, five hundred thousand. And then the waste stream pipeline, which we had double asterisk there, this is still an estimate. Like I said, we won't open bids until August. But we're estimating that to be about one point two million. So total construction estimate at this time, nineteen million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So if we go back to some of those numbers that I showed you earlier, we're still in line with those, with those estimated costs.
What, what brought down the waste stream pipeline? Cause I remember you guys saying that was closer to one point eight to two million.
We moved the pump station that was gonna pump the waste to the wastewater treatment plant. We figured that was more appropriate with the plant contractor, who's doing the pumps and the pump stations anyways on site. And so then when we bid aligned, we can get like a meets or a no walk, someone more, more specialized in just pipeline work. And so then when we bid aligned, we can get like a meets or a no walk, someone more specialized in just pipeline work. And so we pulled the pump station out of, of the waste stream pipeline project and put it in with the plant. So that's why this price went down, we'd have that price go up. Oh, man, what did I do, Andrew? Bid tabulation, this was a great time to bid, guys. I know we've been trying to preach that, there's, there's a couple of plants coming out right behind us. I was worried about one plant in Oklahoma, be the same players. We probably beat them by at least two months, so I'm glad that we were kind of the first one out there in this general area and our region. Very competitive bids, Walters Morgan, worked with those guys on several projects. They did the RO plant in Hutchinson, Clay Center, several local projects. We were invited to Clay Center, it's a very similar plant, green sand. Utility contractors, Crossland Heavy, Wildcat Construction. Low bid was sixteen million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, that's the bottom number. And then you can see where the other bids came in, these two here are pretty close. So about four hundred and fifty thousand lower than second place, that's about what he left on the table. Alternate bid, that you'll see there, fifty-eight thousand. There's been some discussion, I've received several emails from the public about the fluoride equipment and what it would cost, so I asked Burns McDonald to pull the fluoride equipment out of the base bid so that we could look at it, so we could see what the real numbers are. And also gives us the opportunity to have that debate, if you guys want to have that debate. We have time to listen to the public, hear their concerns, debate whether or not we want to boost the fluoride from what naturally occurs to us, to the point seven level that KDC recommends. That's what it costs. And so we can have that debate, not have to award that. I, I did get in touch with Burns McDonald and Walters Morgan, and we asked them if they would hold that pricing while we had our debate. And I got a letter from them today, said that they would hold the pricing for six months, the fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty. They may be able to hold it more than that, but they would need to re-contact their suppliers. You can't hardly hold pricing in this, in this climate, but...
Cause it's basically just a piece of equipment that just, you take it out of the box and you put it there and you hook a couple lines.
Well, there's, there's containment issues, I mean, there's, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that, but not much. All the electrical will be there, it's, it's the fluorination system that, that injects the fluoride into our water. So I have tons of emails from local dentists who said, we need to have it, and I have lots of emails from people who say, we don't need it. So, and most people brush their teeth, so like I said, I, I, I wanted to break it out so that we can have this discussion and not necessarily slow the process down, so.
What, what, as far as the, the bid, the bids that they put in there, how long are those good for?
That's a good question. Per the contract documents, the, the owner is supposed to notify the bid, the, the successful bidder within thirty days of bid opening. So March tenth, April tenth. The contractor is supposed to hold pricing for sixty days. That basically gives us time to review the contract documents and look at some metals, and before we issue the notice to proceed. I've seen that go over the additional thirty days. So basically, they need to know within thirty days whether or not we're planning on awarding the job to them. And then they agree in return to hold pricing for sixty days. If that makes sense, but that's, that's how the contract's written there.
Can you go back a couple of slides for a minute?
Yes.
So that was sixteen point eight, and here it says thirteen five?
Yep, this number plus this number.
Oh, the two together?
Yep.
Yeah, cause we, we had the green sand and RO pre-bid.
So they didn't get to bid on that, on the green sand RO, we've already got secured pricing, but we, we didn't want to pay for it back when you, when you bid.
No, I totally see, no, okay.
Okay.
Just...
Alright.
That's all I wanted, it just didn't... They just weren't matching in my brain, and now they do, so, okay.
This slide, I actually love this slide, mainly for the caption. Water is still the cheapest thing money can buy. And here's how I want to explain it. We looked at just the operation and maintenance costs. I know we've had discussions in the past, and what is it gonna cost to make a thousand gallons? Well, we, we have good numbers. We have really good numbers on what this plant and the components that we have in the plant are gonna make water for. We also have what we call capital investment that we need to achieve. So, just run down here, electricity, you know, seven cents per kilowatt hour. Chemical costs, we know what those are gonna be. And this is all based on down here, an average, we've been averaging two point five million gallons a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's our daily average. So all these costs are based on the daily average, and which gets us a good yearly cost. Green sand replacement, every twenty years, they recommend replacing the media. The low-pressure membrane, those elements in there, five to seven years, but technology, it's trending towards seven years and even longer, we plugged in seven years, that'd be capital replacement. Cartridge filters, every quarter, we need to change those out, ten thousand dollars, and then plant personnel. I think that's a little bit heavy, but we left it in there. Works out to be ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons. That's what it costs right here, per year, and that's just our plan. Replacement rehabilitation budget. What we did there is we took all the non-RO green sand costs, we pulled those out, we looked at the rest of the cost, and we, we took two percent of that. So basically, it's a fifty-year building. So we're looking at all the major infrastructure items to depreciate out over fifty years. So that, back to that number, Dan, that we talked about, the RO and green sand costs of three point some million, I pulled that out. Took the thirteen point five, plus the clear well, plus the line, times two percent. And then our loan debt service, one point four three million per year, that's what we're gonna owe. If we, if we borrow the full amount, and we'll get to that later in a, in a different slide. But assuming we borrowed the full twenty-two million, operation, annual maintenance costs, so that's total. That's this number plus these two numbers, two point six million. Works out to be two dollars and eighty-nine cents per thousand gallons. I went ahead and threw the, the rate, let me go back here, cause I want you to remember this number, the two eighty-nine. That includes plant replacement, that depreciates it out over fifty years, that, I mean, we've got net service, everything in there. Oops. So, right now, the average residential customer is paying about seven dollars and fifteen cents. And then it declines the more water they use. So if there's anything in future rate discussions that I think we need to focus on, it's down here at our very largest users. I don't think that these numbers, long-term, it's just my opinion, it's you guys' decision, but I don't, I don't think that that's going to be sustainable for our water treatment plant. But down here, up in this area for the lower users, seems like the funding is adequate. Now, when I talk about the two eighty-nine per thousand, that's just the box, that's just the plant and electricity. We started our well field, right, and we have to maintain that, we have our distribution, we have fire protection, elevated storage. We have a lot of other factors, but two dollars and eighty-nine cents of it really probably needs to be dedicated for the plant. Anything above that, we need to probably do a further analysis and show how those dollars being spent on our distribution. But it's pretty apparent that as the new plant moves forward, these bigger user items, that's, that's something we might need to focus on.
Do we have any more conversations with those folks?
No, I, just, we've drafted a really sweet deal for them and...
And they're doing their due process, they've had two studies completed already, they know what our number is, they're...
They've had it studied themselves, and also, we, we put a clause in there that we would provide incentives and some rebates potentially for reuse applications. You know, we give away free water to the Spring Hill Golf Course, there's, there's opportunities for irrigation at Cali. And if there's any chance that we can reuse some of that wastewater, they would make some of those improvements. I feel like that should be a direct credit back to them. And so we actually put some of that language into the contract, and they're, they're taking that very seriously.
Well, we told them we'd hold off until we actually had bids in hand to make sure that whatever that end rate needs to be, that we make sure that we could show them the numbers and make them feel more comfortable cause we didn't want to pass a, a rate increase anticipating a twenty-five million dollar plant when it's gonna be substantially less.
But you're asking us to approve it in a week from now without having their concurrence.
We could pay for the plant now without their rate increase.
Let me go back here.
You can. But then you're, you're taking away from the distribution system.
Exactly.
So...
Which is already a struggle.
I mean, this, this tells me we're, we're subsidized quite a bit more than just the distribution. I don't mind offering subsidies, that's you guys' decision, but probably not for debt service necessarily. Maybe on the distribution, fire protection, well field, those scenarios, but, you know, I, I keep going back. I would say even if we subsidize people, I can't imagine water should ever be cheaper than that number, but that would be my recommendation. That it's never cheaper than two eighty-nine per thousand, and that's still cheap, so...
What is, what's the cost per gallon of other water utilities that basically come out of wells? Can you tell us that, or?
Let's not compare an apples to apples. We can look at other plants similar to this, but sometimes, like before Nick got here, I'll be honest with you, there was big transfers coming out. So, I mean, when you just look at other cities' rates, we don't know whether or not they're using some of that to fund general fund or what the transfers are, or their circumstances. Each city is unique, we have our well field where it's at, we have our plant where it's at, and our distribution system is what it is. And no two cities are just alike. And so there's a lot of inputs that go in when you calculate what rate should be to adequately fund your infrastructure.
There's a lot of communities too that have their own electric generation, so they don't charge their utility for electricity, which is our largest cost.
But, but it is fair to say, I mean, I think we can all agree that our funding stream for supporting our infrastructure, I mean, it isn't, it's bad, I mean, it needs help.
In fact, I, I'd sent an email to Nick, because one of the things in our comprehensive plan, which was finished, was there was a goal under the infrastructure to replace all of our distribution lines to a point that we don't have one single pipeline over seventy-five years old by the year twenty thirty. So, gotta wrap your head around that. So, so basically in fourteen years, we've replaced enough lines that we don't have any pipeline over seventy-five years old out in the system. In order to do that, remember, you remember the number, Nick, two point seven million a year is what we need to spend. And, you know, so we're talking four to five, five miles of pipeline replacement every year to hit that goal by twenty thirty. So we know that that's an issue, we know that that's something that we need to continually talk about, we need to keep bringing up because these old cast iron, iron lines aren't getting any anger, but neither is our plant. We just had to shut it down this week because we had a pump failure, and, you know, I thought Rod was gonna have the big one. He's trying to get people down here from Wichita, we don't have redundancy, the plant was shut down. The issues we had yea- yesterday with the red water issues was because we lost power, we don't have any backup power over there. We lost power at eight-thirty, didn't come back on till eleven forty. Two things happened, when we're not pumping, we reverse flow and a lot of the cast iron lines, so we're back flowing from the, from the elevated storage. And then boom, at eleven forty, when we got power, we had to play catch-up. So we turned every pump on, we're pumping extremely hard, all it did was stir up every line we have in the system and, and so we are flooded with calls yesterday. But those are some of the issues that, that we hope we can, well, we don't hope, we will definitely fix with, with the new plant. We won't have some of these issues, we will have backup power.
But you'll still have water in certain neighborhoods.
We will have, and, and I don't know if you remember the presentation about how we do our risk assessment.
Yeah.
You know, that's, this old plant, we, we don't want to carry much risk, that we'd be out of the water business, affects industry, affects all of our businesses, citywide. We, we can tolerate a little more risk, but we need to come up with a game plan, we all know that, on how we're gonna replace the, the aging water lines. It's a big issue.
What would that cost to do it all today?
Forty-six million. That's just water.
That's just water.
That's just water.
The sewer leaks, once it's out of my property.
We don't have sewer.
I'm not, well, in downtown, yeah. Downtown, I, okay.
Just, just hope you don't go into the streams.
I don't want to take up a bunch of your time, I'm almost done, I, I promise. Just attentive schedule, so we have a special meeting March twenty second, and here's why that's important. March eighteenth is notice proceed, we're hoping to get them started to hit this construction season. Most of the initial work is gonna be this construct, as, as far as outside, the site work. Get all the piping in, get, you know, while we have good construction season. I know there's mention of delay and, and potentially kicking the can down the road a little bit further, but if we miss this construction season and it doesn't actually start until the winter, that's just gonna set the whole project back even further. Right now, if we proceed, August twenty-fourth of two thousand and seventeen is slated for substantial completion. Final completion, the end of September of two thousand and seventeen. That entails startup and decommissioning the plant, there's a lot involved with, with the startup. And then our first loan payment with the amendment you saw tonight is February twenty eighteen, so... That's, that's kind of a overview of the schedule. Current financial standings, I think this was brought up earlier. How much cash have we spent today, this goes back to the CDM study. That's where it started, from the time, actually Nick and I and, and our team came on board, we tracked every penny that we spent on this, we spent three point six million, that's exact amount. Remaining water fund cash reserves, we have not taken a disbursement yet, we've got that much left in reserves and cash. And then, so right now, we're eligible to submit a request for KDC to, to receive this money of the loan funds. They would cut a check to us pretty quick for that amount of money if we requested it. However, that goes back to the timeline thing, it's earlier of two years from your first draw, or one year after project completion.
Well, that's February teens is the date period.
So it's, okay, okay.
For the first payment.
So they've set the end date, so we can make payments in February eighteen. So anyways, this is the kind of numbers games that we can play. We can continue to try to pay off the clear well as it completes, I expect the final pay application, or second to last pay application any day, and then we'll have a final pay application. Remaining on that's eight hundred thousand, we've paid eight eighty-eight, something like that. So we have about eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand left on the tank. You know, we could potentially do that, and with the idea of, hey, let's not borrow the full twenty-two million, let's see what we can live with in cash reserves and only borrow the amount that we know we're gonna have to expend, that's a game you can play. Or you may choose to, let's get this money now and go spend two million on water main replacement. Because if this rolls into cash, you know, you're looking at, um...
Six million.
Yeah, si- about six million dollars, and then you guys could say, alright, go spend two or three of it on main replacements. But those are the things that, high-level decisions that we can talk about, and you guys certainly can, can make some good decision points on.
Can you go back to that slide that showed the phase one, two, three, four costing, real quick?
Yeah, that was the last slide, yeah.
So, yeah, so you, you're saying out of, on the phase one, we've paid eight hundred thousand of that?
Eight eighty-eight, something like that, about halfway, a little over fifty percent.
And that's part of that cash spent?
Yes.
How much, like, I know we spent a lot with Smith and Oaks and...
CDM Smith was the big.
CDM Smith, I, I'm just trying to determine if, if Burns and Mack was two million of it, and that was eight eighty of it, that's two point...
That's the lion's share of it, and, and CDM was about four hundred and thirty of it. Go back to the three. Oh, went the wrong way. Cash spent to date, so two to two point one. CDM was four hundred and some thousand, preload, eight hundred and some thousand. We bought property, we've had a lot of non-contractual, it's not a lot, we've got about forty or fifty thousand non-contract expenditures.
And we already spent, we spent cash in excess of this too, cause we've spent on the meters, we've spent, how much on the meters so far? A million on the meter so far?
Yeah, well...
Of, of cash.
If we spend a million dollars...
Which doesn't include that three point six million, plus we've done some more... Which isn't including that three point six million, plus we've done some water iron replacements. Yeah, so we've spent a lot of cash over the last several years without finding.
Well, we replaced what, line too.
Yeah, we had a seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar line replacement job, then we had another one. How much was the second one we did?
The last one was eight hundred and some thousand.
So, and that's all cash we've expended and haven't issued debt for. So we've spent probably close to six million by the time you look at it in cash.
And we're constantly looking for some efficiencies, like I said, I, the thing that keeps me up at night is this old plant is gonna nickel and limes to death. Rod's already talking to me about several things that are on the brink. We're not gonna make it till, um, September twenty-ninth of twenty seventeen without having to put some money in that old plant. It is literally, every time we turn it around, something's breaking, it's just at, at that point. So, we're gonna have to have some cash on hand to keep the old plant running. Um, but again, I strongly recommend, um, for my health, Nick's health, Rod's health, and all the public's health, that we, uh, um, don't kick the can down the road too much further. This thing can s- support itself with the water rates. Uh, we're gonna find a lot of efficiencies with the new plant, and we saw the timeline, it takes a long time to get there.
What, what about, you said May, May eighteenth was your date? Alright. You know, I, and I, I'm saying this genuinely, I mean, obviously you guys all know I'm opposed to the new plant, and I'm, I'm maybe warming up a little bit, but your two eighty-nine figure just scares the hell out of me. But you're, I mean, I'm having hospital board members, ACI people, residents of this community, everybody's concerned about the water plant before the hospital. And, and I know that's kicking the can down the road to, to your, but people are concerned that if the sales tax doesn't pass, now we're gonna have two twenty-two million dollar babies to take care of. And I, I, I recognize that this is a, a, uh, what's, what's your fund, you call it?
Rate payer.
Rate payers fund?
Enterprise, it's an enterprise fund.
However, it, it is, the reality of it is, it is two twenty-two million dollars, and, and part of the, part of the problem with our, with our assessment in this, is fifty percent of our water, and, and I know you know, is, is, isn't the residential, it's, it's commercial, and those are the, are industrial for that matter, and and if any, any one of those two chooses not to use our water at any time, we're, we're in big trouble.
Well, according to our.
Thanks, go ahead.
Our, we have an ordinance in place that says that they have to use our water.
I, I understand, I don't think that.
They don't have to be here.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that would stand in the court of law anyhow, but.
Well, they, they've printed their own numbers, I've, I've talked to them, um, not directly, but via their consultants. Um, and since they had one of their management members pass away, I haven't had a direct line of communication, Nick maybe has, but, um, they know that three dollars a thousand, it's cheap water, it's cheap water. And if they can get some type of credit for reuse opportunities down the road, cause they also know there's a good chance of having to make some upgrades to waste of our treatment plant, and if they can do that, receive some credits on the water side, I think that's the most powerful option for them. So, to do it themselves, to, to go out, just a capital investment to try to get off the city water is not feasible. I mean, they, they can't touch three dollars. Against, a- again, there's economy to scale, um, even though that's our biggest user, there's still economy to scale. And that's why, you know, I welcome anybody that wants to partner with regionalization. Because, uh, for, for one, we're gonna have the best quality of water in, in the long term, and they're coming out with more and more guidelines, and don't, don't, don't get me started on federal regulations, it's, it's enough to make your head spin, it's ridiculous. But those are, in fact, what we have to deal with every day. Um, and there's economy to scale, but, but again, I had the same conversation, Brandon, with people who are concerned.
Yeah.
Two debts, but I had tried to explain to them that the water is an enterprise fund, it is, it's doing well. I mean, we have spent that much cash just on that project, and Nick brought up all the other projects we've done, it's funding itself well. We have, we have one piece that I think we need to address, and we pointed that out, and that's on the.
I was gonna say, you can't really say that in the same conversation where you say that we've gotta make serious changes to replace our infrastructure, cause it, it's not funding itself well, or we would've taken care of those items. And, and I mean that genuinely, I mean, and, and I think you believe that too. I, I mean, we, we've got a problem with infrastructure, and it's bad. And, and it's hard, I mean, I was talking to Richard Hollister, built a brand-new home, you know, brand-new home, and he's got really yellow water. And it's been like that since they built it, it wasn't just yesterday.
Yeah, they neglected it for ninety years, and they didn't do anything, cause they paid for all these other projects.
And I understand, but it.
With the water rates, and that's why we're getting that problem.
But I'm just saying, we don't have a, a abundant amount of money in our water fund, in our enterprise fund, I wish we did.
No.
But.
I mean.
Only way to get that is.
Problem way is, you're paying, you're paying ninety-year catch-up, is what you're trying to do.
And I understand.
I mean, that's, that's a problem, and we're not unique, I mean, by any means.
We should blame Brown back.
No, it's not Brown backs up, we need to bro- blame.
Blame him for the hospital.
It's a bomb, George, have you bushed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank Eric.
I wanna get this information out too, in fact, I have these slides, whatever, but next Tuesday, it does cost us money to bring the whole team down, that's why I tried to wing it tonight to, to lay kinda some groundwork, but we're not the Burns McDonald team here, possibly even the contractor, um, to open it up for public comment. I, I hope this place is filled with people who.
Well.
One of, one of the bids that we, well, with the, the Walters Morgan below bid, we do have a local contractor that will benefit from this agreement, if it is approved.
Well, they listed.
Kuhn Mechanical was listed.
Yeah, they listed subs, and Walters was the only one, but they, they listed Kuhn Mechanical as their mechanical contractor, so. And, and, and I do know that we, we only listed, or had the contractor list electrical, mechanical, and the site contractor. Uh, but I do know, there's some other locals doing some smaller pieces of it, and they reached out to as many locals as they could. It looked like a big portion of the mechanical, they listed as, as Kuhn Mechanical doing that work.
What about them, them, I mean, is there any room for discussion as far as, when is the sales tax, about the twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth, is that right?
That's when the ballots are due back, by noon.
Will we know immediately, or is it accounting, and then we'll know in August, how's that work, or?
Oh, they do have to count them all. Um, I, she sent me, the county election officer sent me a timeline, I believe she had her timeline, it would take about a week to count them all and then double-check.
It'll be the first of June, yeah.
Probably.
And we don't have that kinda time for this.
Well, it's a couple of weeks away, I mean, from what he's saying his deadline is.
No, deadline's thirty days to award.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a notify a little better, yeah.
From, from.
From April tenth?
No, no, from March tenth.
March.
It's thirty days to approve the contract from March tenth.
Which is April tenth.
Yeah, yeah.
And I do understand the whole sales tax, and we're kinda caught in a dilemma here, but the red water issues that we're facing, and the distribution, the infrastructures, because every city, not just us, we have kicked the can down the road, I'd hate to get caught up in doing what we've been trying to get over. And that's kicked the can down the road further, at some point, we've gotta just make some decisions and get it done. We've, you know, this wasn't a fly-by-night, this is three and a half years of a lot of work. And, um, we've saved, we've saved a lot of money, and we're still gonna have a nice facility, it's, it's not.
Are we still gonna have that many parking spots?
No.
Thank you.
No, I brought that.
That's a, that's a limited. That's just an old picture.
More grass to mouth.
The bench out front is gone, that's, that was my favorite feature.
What's that?
There's a bench out front with a lady sitting on there, looking at her iPad, looking at her iPad.
Free wifi.
Oh, I, I was able to pull up, I was able to pull up that schedule here on my phone, um, Thursday, June second, approximately ten AM, we should know, the Board of Canvassers meets at nine AM that day.
June second, okay.
June second.
Is that? I know we've got a lot more questions, but it's getting a late hour, uh, any other business?
No, sir.
I've got one thing that I want the commission to think about.
I do have one thing, sorry. Blarney breakfast is Friday, so if you're available Friday morning, and I'll let you go.
Yeah.
Um, uh, we, it's been a tradition now, well, it started off with public services, and then we expanded to citywide. Um, but if you want to, come, six-thirty.
Bring your.
Friday.
Pancake flipper.
Bring your flipper.
American flag.
Well, Northwest Community Center, so if you can make it, that'd be great. We'll probably start cooking five-thirty, the sausage, and then we'll go into the eggs and everything else.
Jay will be there at five, get it hot, grill it hot.
Yeah, what else you got, Jay?
I guess.
What else you got?
I just want the commission to think about maybe having three meetings a month for a while, uh, two are regular meetings, and one with the hospital by itself, I mean, it's just food for thought if you guys wanna.
We'll get to work in that, with the work session, I guess, cause I think we're gonna have to have some work sessions too, probably.
Probably so, but I'm just, you know, I think the hospital's gonna be one that, we got a lot of questions asked, probably publicly, you know, be here asking questions too and so forth, and, uh, it's whatever you guys think, I mean, I'm just talking out loud right now.
Well, we'll think, can we think about it, and like I said, next week?
Yeah.
You're probably right, though, it's gonna be more.
It's gonna, it's gonna take more time, you know, I think, than one of the regular meetings we're gonna allow us to do, so.
Yeah, unless we want four-hour meetings, right?
Yeah.
And I, and I'd like you guys to think about how much burden you could possibly put on the city if we move forward with the water plant next month, not knowing how this hospital's gonna do.
I'd also wanna know how much burden it would be if we didn't. Really?
Fair question.
Yeah.
Right?
Fair question.
And.
I know where you stood six months ago on water plant.
I said I'd look at the options, I didn't say I was against it, Brandon, okay? And I'm still looking at the options, but they're getting less and less. We're done?
I'd move to adjourn.
Then move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Who said aye?